Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmet. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmet. We'll call the matters in the order which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have one, so you can follow along to see when your matter will be called. If you plan to address us tonight, we ask that you please come up to this podium, please speak into the microphone and tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you please speak clearly into the microphone, so we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. From those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared. These minutes are available at Village Hall and also on our website at wilmet.com. Also, our Village Board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet. If you look up, you can see the cameras in the corners of the room. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the Village Board, to see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask and the policies that we create. You can find archived videos of Village Board and other local government meetings, again, on our website at wilmet.com. And I'd like to personally thank all the residents of Wilmet who tune in regularly to Channel 6 to follow the workings of their local government. Now, before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials. These materials are also posted on wilmet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the Board members receive. This week's packet contained 262 pages. We've had an opportunity to review the information in the agenda packet, so if you do plan to address us tonight, we ask that you tell us the most relevant, most material, the most important points that you really want us to focus on. Finally, we are a community of neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible, so as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your cellphones and other devices. While we're turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Kennedy?
Here.
Trustee Dodd? Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Barrow?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
President Blinsky?
Here. Next item on the agenda is item two, public comment. We're starting our meeting early tonight at 7:00, because we have a pretty extensive agenda, and some residents may not be aware of our early start, so I'm going to defer public comment until at least 7:30, which is our normal start time. We'll take care of some other business, and then at 7:30, I'll return to public comment. So with that, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items that are routine business, that are not normally debated by the Village Board, are placed on the consent agenda. All items beginning with the number three are on the consent agenda, and tonight, the consent agenda consists of the items, you know, starting on page one with item 3.1, all the items on page two, and the first item on page three, which is item 3.1.5. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience and not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So I'll begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. May I see a show of hands? Okay, moving on. Are there any items that any of the trustees want to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So, motion carries, the consent agenda has been adopted. If you're here for an item on the consent agenda, it was just approved. There'll be no further discussion of any of the items on the consent agenda, so you are free to leave, of course, more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. I don't see anybody leaving, so I won't tell anybody to be sure to stop by one of our restaurants on their way home. But I may say that later. We'll move on to report of officers. First item on the agenda is item 4.1, which is adoption of Resolution 2019-R-8 commemorating the contributions of Barbara L. Hirsch. And there's a resolution that I will ask for a vote on in a moment, but I'm going to read that resolution now. A resolution commemorating the contributions of Barbara L. Hirsch. Whereas Barbara L. Hirsch has faithfully served the residents of the Village of Wilmet for 20 years, serving as deputy village clerk in the village manager's office, she ensured the efficient operations of the law and village managers' offices on a daily basis, assisting members of the Village Board, village staff, and countless Wilmet residents. She regularly attended the meetings of the Village Board of Trustees, diligently prepared minutes of the proceedings, managed preparation of meeting agendas and packets, and made certain that records of the Board's activities were kept in compliance with all state and local regulations. And whereas Barbara L. Hirsch, during her 20 years of service, managed the village's liquor license program, assisted hundreds of Wilmet groups with their temporary use and public demonstration permits, and oversaw the village's Freedom of Information Act responses, she assisted Wilmet residents in registering to vote and in overseeing the details of the election process for members of the Village Board. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees, on behalf of the entire Wilmet community, wish to recognize the excellent and dedicated services that Barbara L. Hirsch has provided during her 20 years of service with the Village of Wilmet. Now therefore be it resolved by the Village Board of Trustees, the Village of Wilmet, on behalf of the Village of Wilmet and all of its residents, to hereby acknowledge and express their gratitude for Barbara L. Hirsch for her contributions to Wilmet, and further express their most sincere best wishes for her on her retirement. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be duly executed, included, and preserved in the minutes of the Village of Wilmet Board of Trustees, and the original of this resolution shall be presented to Barbara L. Hirsch. So, we need a motion to adopt this resolution? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Are there any opposed? Okay, the resolution has been adopted. And for those of you who don't know, Barbara L. Hirsch is sitting two to my left. I think Mr. Frenzer has some items to present to you.
Well, Barb, I have two things to present to you, but first, on behalf of all your fellow village staff members here, we'd like to thank you and wish you and your husband Jim all the best in retirement. The resolution that the Board just adopted praises your 20 years of dedicated service to the village and its residents, the many residents you've helped in so many ways, and all the important work you've done for the village. Your many, many contributions and your institutional knowledge will all be missed. For the rest of us, though, for your fellow staff members, what we will all miss most is your friendship. You are a wonderful person to work with.
A friend to all of us, and we will miss you very much. We are all very grateful for having had the opportunity to work with you and get to know you and your family over the years. We wish you all the best and hope to see you again soon, when your travels should bring you back to Wilmet.
Just let me present you your resolution and also our traditional crystal gift.
We'll move on to item 4.2, which is announcement of appointment of William Bradford as Chair of the Plan Commission. Next is a report from our village manager, Mr. Frenzer.
No report, Mr. President.
Next is a report from our Corporation Council, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Next item is item five, report to the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight. Well, we only chewed up 10 minutes, so I didn't quite get to 7:30, but what I'm going to do is I will open public comment now, and we'll return, in the event that public comment is over before 7:30, we'll return to public comment at 7:30. I'll make one last check, see if anybody's present. But during public comment, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda. Members of the audience may address the Board on matters which are on tonight's agenda when the particular matter is called. So are there any members of the audience who would like to address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda? May I see a show of hands? Okay, so let's start on this side. Anybody, there's only three on this side, so if you want to address this and you're sitting on this side, please line up right now. So, Mr. Frenzer will keep the clock, and he'll let you know when you have a minute left, and welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight.
My name is Faith Bugle. I am a resident of Wilmet, along with my family of five, including my two girls, who are here with me tonight. They are rising sixth graders at High Crest, and we are here to address you about the tree grove in the community playfields. Our family has been members of the community for five years. We are committed environmentalists. I drove our electric car over here tonight, which charges from the solar panels on our roof. So we and our family try to do everything we can to protect the environment. When we heard about the trees getting removed from the community playfields, the stand of cottonwoods, our whole family was very concerned. My girls brought it to my attention and also asked if we could come here tonight, so this was at their initiative. And one of the reasons we're concerned is because all three of my children play soccer, and we've been over at the playfields every fall and every spring for the last five years, and I haven't noticed in that time a shortage of playing fields. What I have noticed is that on a hot day, it's actually really nice to sit under the cottonwoods and get the shade, and there aren't a lot of trees in the community playfields. My concern when I read the notice tonight was that it seemed like, excuse me, that the concern over trees was addressed by planting more trees, and I actually disagree with that, because those trees look to be at least 50 years old, and I noticed they might be as old as 100 years, and planting new little short trees won't replace that. It won't replace it for 100 years. But I also noticed that it was to add more fields, which I don't think we've had a shortage of in the community. My kids play soccer at Avoca, at Howard, I know there are fields at West Park. So I was, I'm here to ask you to actually save those trees. They are a precious environmental resource that really is not easily replaced with little saplings. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one final request. My girls, I hope that you will actually notice that not only they're children, and sometimes we think it's cute when children speak, but I actually would ask you to listen to the substance of what they have to say.
You're going to have to move the microphone down. There you go.
As students at High Crest Middle School, we are already...
I'm sorry, would you let us know your name?
Oh, I'm Grace Ricker Bugle.
Okay, welcome.
As students at High Crest Middle School, we are already losing trees and green space in the outdoor classroom due to the construction. It would be even more harmful if we were to lose more trees around our school.
Thank you very much. No, 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 no. This is not a sporting event. We don't clap, we don't boo, we don't hiss, we just listen politely, okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lily Ricker Bugle, and I am 11 years old. Here are some reasons why it is harmful. Green space is helpful for learning and reduces stress. These trees are many years old and impact many lives. Trees and plants are great scenery and provide shade for watching soccer games and other activities. Thank you for listening to us. Thank you for listening to our opinions.
Thank you for both of you for coming out tonight. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Rea Shaw, and I will soon be starting eighth grade in Wilmet Junior High. I just recently moved to Wilmet Junior High in the middle of the year, and yeah, at first school was hard. Had to make new friends, adjust to the neighborhood, and so forth. One thing's for sure, though, being in a junior high now, I know how stressful school can be for some of us, with all this peer pressure and the school and the social media influencers. But when I walk out those doors, I look around and see all the joy on the children's faces running around, playing tag, and even hide and seek behind the trees. That's what takes the stress away. Thinking about the 32 trees getting cut down is just heartbreaking. I understand the part that we need a water reservoir, but when, but we have been given alternative plans on how to avoid the trees. Then there's the soccer fields. Many kids playing soccer get very tired and enjoy sitting in the shade. Me being a soccer player for seven years now, understand how hot it gets and love taking breaks in the shade. In addition to that, it's not just the kids who enjoy the shade, but I have, but I have observed many of the adults watching the game put their chairs intentionally in the shade, so that they're not blinded by the sun. As I wrap up here, I would like you to think of all the kids and adults who live in these neighborhoods, and how disappointed and sad they would be to see these amazing trees leave. Please save the trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Van Ekanamo, president of Wilmet for almost 30 years. I live close by to the park, and I rise to voice my disapproval of the proposal to cut down the trees. The two things that I'd like you all to consider is, one, that besides all the aesthetic and the shade providing qualities of the trees, they provide carbon sequestration, something that we are desperately in need of right now. If we were to cut the trees down, that we would lose that ability from the trees. And finally, there are other alternative plans for putting a reservoir in, as I understand that some of them are even less expensive than the one where it's proposed under the trees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so there are a lot more people on this side. Let's take the first three rows. People who'd like to speak in the first three rows, please queue up.
Hi. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Hi, my name is Eileen Engelhard, and I live on Pomona Lane. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your service, as well as the Park District. I love Wilmet, I love the parks, and the wonderful job that the Park District has done. I'm coming here today to plead to spare the High Crest Grove of trees and allow it to stand. Choose alternative to instead the unusual L shape and spare all the trees. I grew up on the northwest side of Chicago and marveled at their forward thinking to develop all the forest preserves. When we lived in Louisville for three years, this was especially poignant, as we watched horse farms and shaded lanes for biking get torn down to be replaced by developments. We've lived in Wilmet for 28 years. As a soccer mom, I know the value of playing fields, and our five children played soccer, four on the community playfields, and some who went on to the Wilmet Wings, New Tree High School soccer teams, and even a state championship. I don't see the need for more fields. There was always enough room to practice and play here. The population of children ebbs and flows. This is really important to remember. Schools open and close, but the destruction of a treasured tree grove is permanent. Wilmet, you've inspired me as a Tree City USA. I was a Girl Scout leader for three troops, and the environment was important to them. I worked on the Harper Environmental Committee, which met village-wide with other schools, and obviously, environment was important there as well. I had a son who did an Eagle project to develop a lot in Skokie into a nature respite. All these things were things we learned as values in Wilmet. The High Crest Civil War reenactment was an amazing thing on that playfield, especially when they brought the horses. Those children were sheltered from the sun on the north side, where the trees have since come down over the years, and in the High Crest Grove. There's kids playing hide and seek out there, teenagers with slack lines, people put out hammocks for relaxation. There are fewer places where children and people can just be. We want to encourage all to disconnect from their devices and enjoy nature. We don't want to take it away from them. New young trees on a perimeter is not the same thing. Several other huge trees in the field that provide shade, like by the baseball diamond, have come down and have never been replaced. One board member told me that the water is coming from, in there is coming from the streets, but it's not, because it's landlocked, it's surrounded by houses and the schools. Another told me that Laramie didn't have an issue with flooding after the West Park vault was put in, but I found out later that it was a sanitary vault, not a storm sewer. What happens to the houses surrounding the park when external water is sent there? The issue of localized flooding is very real, given that a gigantic impervious tank is being put into the ground.
Less than a minute.
One minute?
Less than a minute.
Okay, I'll send it.
Sorry.
If the ground is like a cheesecloth absorbing water through it, and the area has been replaced by a tank underneath it, the surface water would seem to have no place to go but sideways. If there's openings to handle the surface water, then in a major event, the water would come back out of them. Want to also mention to come to the rally this Sunday at 3:00 PM in the High Crest Grove.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lauren. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. I live at 2431 Pomona Lane. So the High Crest Grove is right behind my house. I wake up every morning, and I look out to the magnificent trees that hold so many memories for me. From fifth to eighth grade, I walked to school every single day, and often stopped to admire the enormous trees that towered over me. Not only did these trees offer me shade every time I was dying from soccer games, and let's be honest, I was no star player, so I really needed it. They also offered me a place to play in the winter. I have so many memories of skating on the ponds, of the water that would freeze underneath the trees, and making songs with my best friend. We honestly thought we came up with the next Mariah Carey-level Christmas hit, and we still joke about it to this day, and I still enjoy the trees just as much. I took a hammock out just last weekend and gazed up at the beautiful grove after I played with my dog running around through the trees. If there's one thing I noticed while reading through the heartfelt comments on the petition that, my understanding is that you've all been sent, it was that people of all days, of all ages, excuse me, have memories attached to the High Crest Grove beyond the environmental impacts that this deforestation would have. People who grew up playing in the park and people who still do cried out for their elected officials to listen to them, as they begged for another route to be taken for this stormwater management problem, one that avoids the sacrifice of these 31 trees. So as of 7:00 PM tonight, there were 690 signatures on this petition, and I have a couple comments, as long as I have time, to share with you. One man said, "I opened High Crest Middle School in 1995 and was the principal through 2003. I had the pleasure of watching thousands of students enjoy the grove. Trees are a valuable and limited resource to be enjoyed by all. If there is an alternative to the placement of the reservoir, it should be used. The community playfield has many huge open spaces. There are certainly better locations and would not require the removal of the grove." Another one is, "Please don't destroy the environment. I come from China, where pollution is a major problem. At the Great Wall, an hour and a half outside of Beijing, the pollution is so thick that the wall fades into the smog. Please don't take America's environment for granted, or we will soon experience the same problems as China." Another one is, "As a parent of two children that use the playfield often, and as a PE teacher, I know how important that access is to shade during play. Taking away an oasis that will not be replicated within the next 30 years takes away from the safety, beauty, and fun of those who use that park consistently and those who live around it." And I'll read one more. Trees absorb pollution, clean the air, provide shade, and are a buffer against noise, provide a home for birds and other wildlife, enhance property values, cool the air, and last but not least, trees are simply beautiful. Especially on a day like today, when the heat index will be over 100 degrees, go and stand in an area that is treeless, and then go stand under a tree. There's a major difference, a life-saving difference. Why anyone would cut down trees when there are other available solutions is beyond my understanding. We are living in a world of catastrophic climate change and need to plant more trees, not cut them down. It is time to finally, once and for all, realize that we cannot keep destroying nature. We will all pay for it in the end, and that end seems nearer and nearer." Although that does sound morbid, what the person had to say was very true. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Edelman. I live at 232 Lawndale. I've lived in Wilmet for 46 years, and I went to Kilmer, Joyce Kilmer Grammar School in Rogers Park, so that makes me an expert on trees. But at any rate, I wanted to call your attention to reports from the United Nations and in Science Magazine in May and July of 2019, that note that planting trees must become a priority in order to mitigate global climate change. The reason is, as one of the gentlemen mentioned, trees absorb and sequester CO2. When trees are cut down, however, they exude CO2 into the atmosphere, and that increases global climate change. So certainly, Wilmet does not want to be in the position of actually exacerbating global climate change by cutting down a whole grove of trees, especially in view of the United Nations and the Science Magazine's admonitions against this. There are other considerations which haven't been mentioned, among them, the decline of birds and leptopera, lep, I can never pronounce it, I'll just say butterflies and moss. Cutting down the cottonwoods eliminates one of the prime nesting sites for the beautiful Baltimore Oriole, who comes all the way from South America to nest in Wilmet, among other places. When we cut down the cottonwoods, we eliminate one of the Oriole's nesting sites. I'm personally familiar with this, because at the Wilmet Centennial Park Prairie, there was a beautiful, magnificent cottonwood tree that an Oriole nested in every year, and they have a very interesting nest that is woven, and it looks like a pouch. Then lightning struck this cottonwood tree, and instead of saving it and pruning it, it was cut down. So now the Oriole doesn't, it's one less cottonwood for the Oriole. Another animal that uses cottonwood trees are the red-shouldered, red-tailed hawks. I also observed them at Centennial Park. There are also butterflies that lay their eggs in cottonwood trees on the twigs and leaves, and some of them nest in the bark. So for these reasons, I'm asking the Wilmet Board to please do what is necessary to save this really irreplaceable, priceless resource that I, among all the other Wilmet residents, really want to save. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Adi, and I will be going to, into sixth grade at High Crest. I can't believe that all of the trees on the High Crest Grove will be cut down just to place one big reservoir. In my opinion, I think that the tree, all the trees that, all the trees are a reservoir itself, because I've noticed that when it rains a lot, there's literally a pond with geese, and it gets absorbed within a few hours by the trees. I have played soccer for five years and baseball for four years, and it just doesn't make any sense to cut down 32 trees for two soccer fields. It gives, the trees gives shade to the students of High Crest and the residents on hot days. And even looking at the trees gives peace and joy to everyone in its surroundings. I was walking to, I was talking to all of my friends about this problem, and it's not just me, it's not just me who thinks that this, this is wrong. I have also noticed that when soccer games go on, all of the kids, parents, and other people take shade in the tree, in the, by the trees. There are about 850 students that go to High Crest. My parents, the school, the community, and even the world is always talking about the environment to save the trees and pollute the air. How do you, how do you think everybody feels when these rules are just being ignored by adults? Think about what type of example this, this will set for all the 850 students of High Crest. Please save the trees. Thank you.
Thank you. You're going to have to push the microphones back up, yep.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Martha Helander. My husband, Lawrence Cristiano, and I have lived in Harper, we live in the Harper neighborhood on Thornwood, and my garden for 27 years has been a sanctuary for native plants, bees, and butterflies, and I love to share it with local residents and children all the time. I'd like to say a few things about cottonwoods. I have learned more about cottonwoods than I ever thought I would. I, it's something I had just not studied, even though I love botany and I study a lot. So, the one thing I thought was really interesting that I've not heard anyone bring up is the cultural role of cottonwoods in the, in American history. Cottonwoods, I found, are, were sacred to the Native Americans. They regarded the rustling of the leaves, we all know that, right? We all grew up with that, as prayers, going up to the divine creator. And they received messages back by the whispering, whispering back in the rustling leaves to those who sought wisdom under the trees. Like an open line of communication with the divine. I thought that was really wonderful to learn. Native Americans view the shade of the cottonwood as a healing place and say that it can help resolve conflicts. The tree is a protector, because it can grow where no other tree can. All parts of it are edible, everything, the bark, the inner bark, the outer bark, inner bark, the buds, the shoots, the leaves. And the white fluff, and this really amused me to learn, the white fluff that some people don't like, I actually like it, the, they used it to stuff baby diapers. So here you have this, you know, free baby diapers fluff coming down. As a mother, I would have been very thankful to see that, it's like, thank, you know, thank goodness. Individual survivor trees can live up to 300 years, and 100 years is pretty common. I also learned that you cannot tell the age of a, you cannot tell the age of a tree from the size of its trunk, because close to Lake Michigan, there's research that has found that we, because of the colder winters, the trees here don't get as large as fast as they do miles to the west. So even though those trees may look, you know, maybe you think, oh, they're only 50 or 75 years old, they could be 150 years old. The only way to find out is to cut them down, which we hope that you will not do. I will just skip over the parts about the water storage and all of that. I found it amazing that they, they are one of the most adaptable trees that exists. They can endure extreme temperatures. As some of the trees in a cottonwood forest die, because they're all the same age to start with, the survivors grow into these enormous solitary trees, and the Native Americans taught the pioneers, when they arrived, this is how you know, when you look out at the prairie, especially in the plains states, and you see a cotton, one of those old cottonwood trees, you know there was a cottonwood forest there. That's the last tree standing, and that's where the water is. That's the last tree standing, and that's where the water is, so that you can see it.
That's three minutes.
Sorry?
I'm sorry, that's three minutes.
Three minutes? All right. Let me just sum up. I will skip a few things. Okay, my concern about the kid is the children, because the ages of the children at High Crest Middle School is just a perfect age for them to learn these things about nature and about the history of this area and the people who lived here before. And I wanted to ask that the park board consider, if we do save the Grove, which I hope you will do, offering things like tree camp, and the teachers could lead discussions and activities and put on plays about the history of the area under these amazing trees. And one last thing, Walt Disney got his inspiration for Mickey Mouse and all of those characters while sitting under the old cottonwood tree on his family farm in Missouri, and he would go back there and talk about daydreaming under those trees. And so I'm thinking, what about the future animators and artists and dreamers of Wilmette that are, they have a place to be while their friends are out playing soccer, because not all kids fit that team sports, you know, model. We need to respect both. So I don't think we could design a better tree for Wilmette than the cottonwood, and here we have a whole grove of them. Let's save it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Raj. I have recently moved to Wilmette. We love, we love the neighborhood and the beautiful community playfield. During the school year, my kids cross the field and often rest in the grove of trees. The gym classes are special interest to them because they can wash from the beautiful park and trees. We understand the flooding challenges for some of the Wilmette residents and agree that the mitigation system needs to be in place. We have reviewed the memorandum released by the engineers, and after carefully reviewing the proposed plan for the community playfield and the estimated cost for the stormwater reservoir, as a resident of Wilmette, I am at complete loss. I'm paying for the unnecessary destruction of trees to provide for the concrete park, which is very disappointing and discouraging. It is an environmental and ecological disaster, destruction to the area. Beside the destruction, beside the destruction of the scenery and nature of this park, there are other impacts with the destruction of these grove of trees. Climate change has made the historical data of storms less reliable, and the prediction of the severity of storms have been increasingly more intense. If it does overflow and the water needs to be released from the reservoir, what is, what is your plan to protect the homes in close proximity to the reservoir, since these homes will receive the most flooding? In the event Village makes the decision to release the water from the reservoir, the flow rate will be larger and faster than the ground would normally, naturally absorb. Buffalo bio in Houston was flooded the worst in Hurricane Harvey in twenty seventeen because of the release of water from the reservoir, because the reservoir could not predict the storms. The presence of the grove of trees will help, help with absorption of the excess water. The hasty decision of the remove the trees will be unnecessary loss of valuable asset to the plan. There are two schools very close proximity, which can be flooded at large and potentially putting those kids in danger. After listening to the park board meeting on June eighth-
One minute.
... I feel the original intention of stormwater solution is becoming less important, and soccer fields and utility aspect to generate revenue from the park is becoming more important, which is very concerning. These trees have been there for at least a couple of generations, and removing them for the usage of soccer field is not even understood by kids. Trees are vital part of the ecosystem, and they need to be saved. The alternative plans must be looked at, at carefully and considered. All of the villages, all of the issues must be communicated to the Wilmette residents and especially the surrounding neighborhood by the community playfield, and our concerns and ideas must be more seriously considered prior to making any decision on removing the Grove. We need your help as elected officials to help resolve the issue without harming the environment. Please save the trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I just want to note for the record, I originally had commented that we were delaying public comment until at least seven-thirty. We have now passed seven-thirty, so any resident who was unaware of the early meeting is now here, and so we can be confident that we're not skipping someone in that. So, excuse me for interrupting you, sir. The floor is yours again.
Thank you. Good evening. Wow, this is my first-ever Village Board meeting speaking engagement, and I'm nervous, but I'm also concerned.
Tomorrow, you can watch yourself on YouTube.
Hey, and I've been doing that, and I've been doing, and I got some stuff for you guys to listen to as well. So my name is Bridge. I'm resident of Wilmette. All of us appreciate your time in looking into this matter, which is very near and dear to all the residents, neighborhoods, and especially the kids, if you haven't heard of already, especially the kids. We enjoy these trees immensely. The decision you all make will have a massive impact on the residents, the neighborhood, and the kids, ecosystem, and the environment. Let the decision be where you are protecting all the trees, especially the one, in my personal theory, that seems a bit away from the group. It's majestic, and setting up a water reservoir away from that tree makes the most sense. In our current and dire climate change matter, these decisions impact all of us, locally, nationally, and globally. Why would anyone think of cutting down a native close to a hundred, hundred-year-old cottonwood trees is beyond me. They are very healthy trees, which are in the corner, in the corner of thirty-nine-acre community playfield. It's not bothering anybody, it's education-wise, it's important for the kids as well. On my YouTube, I've been listening, from one of the studies, I learned to know that if we remove all the insects and worms from this planet, all humans, all of us, will die in less than three years. But guess what? If we remove all human beings, the plant will flourish. Why? Because we have come to destroy all natural resources, and removing the trees is not a solution. Let's do the simple and obvious. Save the trees, and any plan we all come together with must and should guard the trees for everyone, should protect community playfield residents, and especially the kids for both school. You have an opportunity to play a Santa Claus. It's a gift to the kids and neighborhood that rarely you will find anywhere else. Please don't take them away, and please instruct our park district to use the alternative plans that will save the trees. I understand that there is a short-term challenge for the soccer field, but removing trees will be forever lost from the neighborhood and from the kids who go to High Crest and Wilmette Junior High, and you will set a wrong example for the generations to come into this area. Please don't destroy this beautiful community playfield. Please don't add destruction to the ecosystem and the environment. Let's do the right thing. Please save the trees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Do you want me to speak now, or did you want to get on? Did you?
No, no, no. No, I've still got the last three rows, so.
Okay. My name is Rick Prohof. I've been a resident at twenty-four thirty-five Pomona Lane for over thirty years. We back up to the park, we face the trees. I'm the one that helped create an online petition for your review and to seek comment from a number of residents of Wilmette and elsewhere, which of course, my daughter, my daughter helped me set up.
They, they've asked you to speak into the microphones. The taller folks-
I was the organizer of the online petition with the help of my daughter that has been presented. I'm sure all of you hopefully have had a chance to look at the petition. We have only recently discovered that this is be a village stormwater detention area, which was moved from Centennial to playfields. We understand that was a difficult decision, that you've worked hard for five years or more, trying to resolve a devastating flooding event for many of our residents. We're not insensitive to that. We're not trying to block your efforts and the efforts of the community to establish resilient, and I mean resilient, infrastructure to climate change increasing stormwater. It will increase, you are ahead of it, and we applaud your efforts. I thank Mr. Bremen for alerting us to the fact that on an off-agenda basis, the park board went ahead with a consensus vote to not approve the alternative plans that would have saved these trees. And I don't want to misquote the additional cost for a gravity-fed system that would avert the destruction of the trees, but someone can correct me, but am I wrong? The engineers are here. I think it was eight hundred thousand dollars in additional cost to use the one that has been consensus voted by the park board for the sake of two additional fields. Is that incorrect?
In upfront cost, but not including ongoing maintenance.
Well, right, but there would be no gravity, there would be gravity fed from both systems. Is that correct?
Right, the, no, there's, there, there's ongoing maintenance. So your numbers aren't quite right. I'll call the engineer up and he can-
Yeah, but I mean, it's a significant sum. Correct?
Um, I, you know, I think when you do the math-
I don't mean to put you in a spot.
It's probably not, actually.
I won't put you in a spot, but within a matter of less than two weeks, we have three hundred and fifty Wilmette residents supporting our efforts to save the trees. We were alerted to this new decision less than two months ago, really, from when the board moved it from Centennial, maybe it's three months by now. So to have meetings the day after the Fourth of July holiday, when people go back to work and have an off-agenda, finished business, is not truly acceptable. We're glad that there was no vote. In two weeks, we have three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty today. That's five more since I sent my email this afternoon. It is a growing coalition. We farmed a not-for-profit to try to protect these trees. We're gonna have a rally in the park at three PM this Sunday behind the school in the Grove. And I love the comments from Martha, who talked about the trees and the cultural wisdom and the prayers, because that's what we're gonna do, and I hope every one of you will join us. This is not supposed to be an adversarial proceeding. We're expressing ourselves with civil nature. We expect the most from you. We really enjoy living in this community where people, if they're fully informed, they make very wise decision under your leadership. It is not to be denied that you have an issue because you've tried everything else, and now you have asked to ask the park board, because it's on the land that's within the title of the park board, and I understand your deference to their decisions, but the land may be in title, but ownership is right, title, and interest. They may have title, but we all have interest. We all have rights, so-
Time is up, sir.
Thank you for your, your attention.
Thank you. Okay, last three rows on this side.
My name is Jeff Sacks. I live on Meadow Drive. I've been a resident for about twenty-five years. I don't want to repeat things that have been said by a number of people ahead of me. When I went on the internet this evening to check the time of the start for this meeting, the first thing that popped up was Tree City USA. Let me just read a couple sentences. Thanks to the effort of the Public Works Forestry Division, the village of Wilmette has received Tree City USA status since nineteen eighty-three. Tree City USA is a program to recognize communities that effectively manage their public tree resources. Are we effectively managing our public tree resources? That's the question I want you to ask yourselves when you vote on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Fay Jacobs. I live on Pomona Lane. Thank you for considering an alternate plan for the necessary stormwater project here in our beloved community playfield in wonderful Wilmette. I've lived in the perimeter of the community playfield for thirty years and have seen countless people of all ages, athletic teams, students, as well as pets, enjoy the beauty of the field and feel that one of the highlights of the park is witnessing the irreplaceable grove of the native cottonwood trees. Twenty-five years ago, I planted, at a shared expense with the park district, several trees and a bench at the northeast side of the park in memory of a child of mine who died at an early age. My goal for this bench was to invite people of all ages to sit, rest, contemplate, heal, and even kiss. The bench was specifically planted at a certain angle to offer the best possible view of these majestic cottonwood trees, to assure there be a place for all of our community to rest and experience free beauty all year long, including the soccer season. I invite all of you to come and sit on this bench and witness the community playfield's beauty with these trees in your view, and then close your eyes and imagine these trees gone. The nesting site for the Baltimore Orioles, gone. Red-tailed hawks that nest and perch in the trees, gone. The many species of butterflies that we've heard about, gone. The vibrant color in the springtime, gone. The sun glistening on icicles formed on the trees after a snowstorm, gone. Enormous shade offered to the schoolchildren that we're hearing from and soccer teams, gone. I've done this experiment, and for me, there's a feeling of loss, and the same goes for others who I've chatted with as they stroll through the park on these hot summer nights. "Oh no," is the most common response when told that the grove of trees, yes, the tall ones, the ones that can never be replaced in our lifetime, could be chopped down. For all these years, I've witnessed students from High Crest Middle School have color war games and other outdoor activities, and use the grove for necessary shade on a hot day. It's true that the community playfield is just that, a playfield for all of the community. And I understand that the stormwater project is most likely going forward, and that the playfield is the lucky recipient of this most expensive project. A few months ago, at the urging of those opposed to the chopping down of the grove, an approval was set forth to investigate other configurations for digging beneath the playfield, and to our joy, two plans were set forth, which not only cost less money by almost a million dollars, but saved a majority of the trees. Many of those who signed a petition to save the trees were overjoyed that it seemed at the time these alternate plans were being considered. At last, at the park district meeting on seven, eight, nineteen, many questions were raised, not having to do with the stormwater project, but ways in which an extra soccer field could be added in lieu of a grove of trees. Personally, I was surprised to hear why a grove of trees would be sacrificed to add an extra area for a soccer game, primarily in the spring and fall, when there is so much beautiful open space which already exists. I wondered, is this about the stormwater problem and upcoming project that many residents have waited patiently to begin? Or is it now about extra soccer space, when I, along with many of these signed, who signed the petition to save the trees, had no idea it was necessary? Last paragraph, the Arbor Day Foundation describes the cottonwood tree as an age-old friend to the American people. I describe the High Crest Cottonwood Grove as an age-old friend to our community, and urge you, before you vote, to come and sit on my bench and then vote to save the High Crest Grove of trees, not chop them down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so last four people are in line right now.
Yes.
Yes, you're one, number one. Welcome.
I'm Debbie Victoria, and I live, my husband and I live at twenty-three forty-one Pomona Lane, near the community playfield. You've heard from many of my neighbors, and I certainly support everything they have said. I pay close attention to village governance, and I thank you for all that you do for us in terms of running our wonderful village. And I've also been very interested in the stormwater project and have watched as you have struggled through that process. And I was especially pleased to read in President Bielinski's President's Letter in June of twenty eighteen, and I'm going to quote you, "Our goal is to ensure that the underground storage improvements are implemented in a timely manner and in a way that maintains the character and quality of any affected parks or other public property," end quote. I've observed the playfields for many years and can speak to the character and quality of this place. It is a broad, peaceful stretch of land and oasis for our citizens. It is a thirty-nine-acre park with lots of open space and a small grove of trees. Students from all over the village move through this park while enrolled in the middle and junior, middle school and junior high. They walk and bike to and from school, hold school events and assemblies in the park. They dawdle amongst the trees and enjoy the shade. Use sports, play baseball and soccer in the park. Younger children and adults use the park year-round. They run, play, walk, bike, skate, and linger throughout the space. The park is home to birds and wildlife, many of which live in the grove of the cottonwood trees. We recently learned about the proposed tank installation and that it calls for the removal of thirty-two trees in our grove. Alarmed and unhappy, we formed a petition, you've been hearing about the petition, and I want to read a few of the comments that struck me. First was from Maya C., who said, "I played in those fields and would rest in the shade under those trees when I was little. Now that I'm in high school, I bike through that meadow and would be sad to see the trees go." Elena C. wrote, "This is the beauty of Wilmette. We love strolling through the fields and admire the magnificent trees that took many years to grow so tall. They provide shade for kids in their PE classes and during sport events. Please choose a plan that keeps the trees intact." Kristen D. writes, "That grove of trees has been a refuge and playground for all of my kids." And Joab O. writes, "The village and park district need to act as stewards of our local environment. We are dismayed that in this large park, most of it open and treeless, the park district has selected the section of land where trees must be removed. Why not put the tank in an area of the park that does not have trees? But the park board admits that their choice would allow them to have soccer fields, additional soccer fields, which would be covered in the same artificial turf they have used at West Park. Do we want the community- Do we want the community playfield to look like West Park? Officials are eager to do the first installation in this park before Hibbert and Thornwood Parks. Park officials view the trees as obstacles to their property development, a sports complex that they hope will bring in revenue to their coffers. We have been told that the tank location decision is complicated and multifaceted, but know that two cheaper options seem to have been rejected. So when we think about President Bielinski's pledge to maintain the character and quality of affected parks, I must tell you that this will change the fundamental character of the community playfields. If this project is completed as proposed, our wonderful park will be left stripped and sterile with patches of bright green synthetic turf, altered and damaged forever. I hope you will go back to your stated goals for this project and not allow the destruction of this valuable public space. Thank you."
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, the taller folk actually need to lean into the microphones. I personally don't have that problem, but...
Let me try this. And I've got my mic check. Yeah, so my name is Srinath Reddy. I'm a resident of Wilmette. First of all, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And I would also say that, I mean, this board here cares for the trees. I mean, if you didn't, you would not have approved a project to go find alternate options that would save the trees. So, and you now have three options. And I think all of this discussion is around what has proceeded in the last park board meeting, which was on July 8th. And I think what happened there, if you, actually, I sat and watched about 53 minutes of discussion in that board meeting around this topic. What has happened there is, while there was no vote, there's a majority leaning towards the option one, which was to cut down the trees. But what really stood out in that meeting, and if you listened to the comments being made, it was a very healthy debate. It's not like everyone wanted just to cut all those trees down. That's not how it is. There's different points of view. But the thing that struck out for me was they almost are unaware that there is an opposition to it. And you can hear it in their comments. And so, the request I have for this board, in fact, they're unaware of the fact that they have three options only because there was opposition, there was an opposing point of view, and you, the board, actually created three options. So the request I have is a couple of them. One is, can this board communicate to that board that there is real opposition and there is concerns about those trees being brought down? Honestly, to no fault of theirs, I don't think they are aware that there is opposition. And I believe that may actually change the course of the conversation within the board. And then the second thing is, you spent the money, you spent the time, you created the three options, one of which is equally economical and saves the trees. And I'm curious to know if you have an option to take the cutting of trees off the table? And you can still present two options, one of which is, again, economically the same, serves our purpose. And then the last comment I have, which is more about my kids, I have a kid that walks through that grove to the school. It's just hard for me to understand how we teach our kids that we should save our planet and turn around and cut 31 trees right behind them. And that's just hard for me to fathom, you know? That's all I have to say. I just hope that the importance, the point, the opposing points of view are communicated to the Park Board, and I hope that there's some change in course, and we could save the trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Elise Morance. I'm here to be a voice for the voiceless, the 32 trees and the wildlife and other creatures who depend on their survival. These 32 aged trees have experienced more life collectively than everyone combined in this room. That's something to think about. Nothing will or can replace their presence. Planting new trees, no matter how many, as a replacement to 100-year-old trees, will not replace that loss. Let's come together as people all connected to the earth to do the right thing and save these trees, these ancient trees, for all of our future generations. These are, there are other viable options. Don't make an irreversible mistake that we'll be sorry about in the future. And while this might be inappropriate, I'm not sure, but I kind of found it disrespectful that Mr. Stein's been on the phone the whole time, that everybody's been reading. Just a comment.
Welcome. Yeah, you definitely have to move that one down. There you go.
Hi, hi. My name is Heath Morance. I'm going into fifth grade, and I know all my friends are really nervous to go to a brand-new school. But I think the trees are comforting and refreshing. They provide oxygen, shade, and beauty. And animals live in trees like squirrels and small birds. Plus, trees could be older than you, so respect elders. And you would respect elders. So you should treat these trees the same, with the same respect that you would treat an elder. Finally, my friends would like the comfort and shade of trees, making a brand-new school more nature-like and a place kids can go for fun. The trees will make all the fifth graders less nervous.
Thank you. Okay, so, public comment has concluded, but we're gonna, I'm gonna ask, first off, our engineer is here, our consulting engineer is here, so just a couple of things that I want to address with him. And then I've got some comments as well regarding the process. You're gonna have to move the microphones back up. For once. Welcome. For the record, would you state your name?
Sure. Darren Olson with Christopher Burke Engineering.
Okay. So, a couple of things I wanted you to address. There were a couple of people who raised concern that the installation of this project at the park was going to lead to localized flooding, that somehow we would release water or that the water would be drawn, that we would grade it in some way or something like that. Would you just address those comments and those questions?
Certainly. And it's actually the exact opposite. So, how this reservoir is currently designed is to fill by gravity. So as the storm sewers in the west side of the village begin to fill, that water will back up into the underground storage tank. And then as capacity exists in the storm sewer, after a storm event, that water will then slowly come back out into the storm sewer system. Now, this system is designed for a certain amount of rainfall, and when that is exceeded, that rainfall will accumulate in the streets to a lower elevation and for a shorter period of time than it does now. So under no condition would flooding be worse. It will always be lower with project condition because we're storing so much of it underground.
So let me rephrase it for the layman. We've all heard stormwater stuff a lot. So currently, you have intakes on the street?
That is correct.
And the water flows into the storm system. And when that system gets full, that water backs up. That's what leads to the street flooding that we have. Now, we've created storage, so more water can get into the storage, and therefore, less water would be on the street. And because of the storage, in no case would there actually be more water at any point in time because the storage is using up that. And there isn't, the water's not flowing into, there's no opening at the top of the park, like, so water is being directed into the park. This is all underground. The sewers that exist today and the sewers that are going to be built connecting it to the reservoir. We're not doing Q and A. Sorry, sir. You can send it to us.
That is correct.
No, this is not, the public comment is over. We have a meeting to run. You can ask questions via email or whatever, and we will forward them on to Mr. Olson. Okay.
You are correct. All the water that enters the underground storage will do so through the storm sewers.
Right. Okay. So the concern about this causing localized flooding, it's actually the opposite. It should help with all the localized flooding that exists in the area.
That is correct.
Okay. I thought that was the only sort of engineering question. Was there any other engineering, Ms. Berger, was there any other engineering question that I missed from the comments? Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Olson.
You're welcome.
All right, so I want to talk about process a little bit here. First off, thank you to everybody who came out. Throughout the stormwater evaluation process, we have gone above and beyond in terms of trying to solicit feedback input from residents, going all the way back to when we first made the determination even to move forward. We had color glossies that were sent out to residents. So we welcome the feedback, and we welcome your presence here tonight. Thank you for that. So, a number of you mentioned, but I think it's important to mention, the park district did not make a decision, a final decision on this subject. They will be discussing the matter in meetings in August, because first, they need to reach agreement on a memorandum of understanding with the village. So after we have that memorandum of understanding, then we can move forward with things like design work and then actually enter into a formal intergovernmental agreement, which would be ratified by both boards. And so, we're looking for them to do that in August so that we can stay on schedule with this program. Now, the village board is obviously well aware of the concerns that were expressed here tonight. In response, as some have mentioned, the village did ask its engineers at cost, nothing is free when Mr. Olson and his team do the work, to offer alternative designs. And those designs were presented to the Park Board. And, you know, we'll talk about the delineation of responsibilities here, but when the village delivered those designs to the Park Board, they basically said, "We're willing to move forward with whatever you deem to be the best decision for the public in the parks." And it's their prerogative, sort of, to manage the property of the parks. So let me give you some history here, a little history lesson. Some of you residents who've lived here for a long time may remember some of this. But there is, you know, the park district is a separate governmental entity. It has a separate board. They do meet in this room, but we don't have authority over them, they don't have authority over us, much like I don't have authority and this board doesn't have authority over the school districts, separate, or the library for that matter. So, but back in the 1980s, there was a dispute between the village board and the park district over Howard Park. Anybody, any of the older residents here nodding that they remember that? Okay. So, the park district sued the village. We went to court. We actually went to the Supreme Court of Illinois to decide sort of the fundamental question of authority of the village over the park district. And the court did say that our zoning ordinance does apply to park district property. So if the park district is making changes to Gilson Park, for example, that was nonconforming, there's a process that they had to go through that. But in 1986, when they rendered the decision, the court also made it clear that there are relative roles of the two units of government, and that while we have the statutory authority to regulate land use, the park district has the statutory responsibility to manage park property and to make those decisions around what the community's recreational needs are and how the assets of the community should be deployed in those. So, the court stated, the quote that I have in my notes is, "Intergovernmental cooperation is, of course, a two-way street." And so, since then, the park district and the village have worked very cooperatively. I mean, it's sort of amazing when I talk to people like Vern Squires, who was village president back then, this issue divided the community. I mean, it was a big deal. Today, we think, oh, two governmental entities suing each other, who cares? Back then, it was a big, big deal. But since then, we've operated cooperatively. And at the July 9th, 2018 park district board, when Mr. Frenzer and Ms. Berger, our director of engineering and public works, appeared in front of the Park Board, it was, you were seeing this process in action. So, the Park Board did not have and does not have authority over our decision about what the community's infrastructure needs are. That's the village board's areas of expertise, what sewer project it should be. The park district wasn't questioning that. But they did make clear that they intended to exercise their duties with regards to the property. And the village was also clear that, look, we need to work cooperatively with you. We respect the fact that they have the control over the property, and we needed, we agreed and understood that any new infrastructure that we installed needed to be consistent with the park district's view of their strategic vision, their operational needs, et cetera. And we've had a great process. I mean, there were some questions about the process earlier on. Shouldn't you have brought the park district in earlier? Well, frankly, we didn't. The board had to decide what the sewer answer was and how much money the board was willing to spend, how much of the residents' money the board was willing to spend, before we could kick it over to the park district and say, okay, now how do we make this all work with your process? So, the Park Board will have a conversation. I mean, and I have confidence myself that they'll make a thoughtful decision on this. I do ask you all, I mean, I know the petition and the like has now been sent to park commissioners. Park commissioners, I believe, were aware of the controversy. It's not just at the community playfields that this came up. It came up at Thornwood Park as well, for that matter. And, so I do suggest that, yes, express your concerns, attend their meeting, let them know your point of view. But I should point out that the village board can't make the park district give us access to their property. We have to do this collaboratively. I can't instruct the Park Board. This board can't instruct the Park Board, the police chief, the fire chief, on matters that relate to what they are. Yes, they can instruct the Park Board that they need to be in compliance with our regulations. But in terms of making a decision on the property, we can't force our way into park district property and build something that they don't want in a place that they don't want it. Okay? So, this is, sir. Sir, sir, I think at the beginning, I said that we have provided them alternatives that satisfied that. Now, please, everybody had their chance to speak. So at the end of the day, we've heard you, and I expect the Park Board will hear you. The decision on how the community playfields will be utilized in the village of Wilmette is the Park Board's decision. And the voters elected the park commissioners to make that decision. So at the end of the day, I can't, the alternative, sir, all the head nodders is, kill the project. The Park Board says I can't do it, kill the project, okay? So, I'm just saying, I can't force the Park Board to do something. As a resident, you have every right to express your opinion, and frankly, should express it as forcefully as you'd like, so that they're aware of your point of view. But again, they're an elected body, just like this is an elected body, and they will make a decision, and we will go along with their decision when it comes to how to manage the park property. Okay? So with that, I will ask Ms. Berger if there's anything she wants to add to the comments. Mr. Frenzer, anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna move on to item six, which is the Standing Committee reports. First up is the Land Use Committee. Trustee Barrow.
Thank you, President Bielinski. We have case 624 regarding Elmwood Avenue, and I move to approve zoning board of appeals report, case number 2019Z19, 624 Elmwood Avenue, regarding a request for a 396.42 square foot, 4.72% total floor area variation, and a 9.54-foot rear yard stair setback variation to permit the construction of an exterior stairway in accordance with the plan submitted.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. If this item comes with a negative recommendation from the zoning board of appeals, it will need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the zoning board. Mr. Adler, are you prepared to open us up here?
As we do when you get a request from the zoning board with a negative recommendation, we go through the request of the standards and the findings of fact that the zoning board found. In this case, as was stated, it was a request to build a staircase leading up to a flat roof, attached flat roof, which is encroaching into the rear yard of the property and is over the rear yard coverage requirement, or sorry, total floor area coverage requirement. The question for the zoning board is, does the request meet the standards? If the request meets the standards, the variation is approved, the staircase can be constructed as requested. If denied, the proposed staircase cannot be constructed. This is not a case, as you've had in the past, where the work has already been completed, the work is in for permit, but no work has been done on it. The variation standards, I won't go through the six standards. You've seen them a lot, but we could go back to those if... You've seen them a lot, but we could go back to those if you would like. The finding of fact in which the ZBA based their decision, this was a case where you had three members of the zoning board who voted for it, two members who voted against it. There was one vacancy on the zoning board and one absence. So, while there was a majority who voted for it, you do need four votes to get a positive recommendation. So, this is a case where it did come as a negative recommendation. So, that's why you see a majority and a minority finding. And if you would like, we could go back to that. Here's the plat of survey that shows the setback. The setback that was shown on the plat in the file actually had a slightly smaller number. There was some information going back and forth with applicant and staff. 10.46 is the best number that we came up with of the approximate setback to what they're proposing, and that's what the variation is based on. And then, just to give context, here's the aerial. So, you could see, you see the white square off the back of the home. That is the roof of the garage and where the staircase would lead up to. And I think you probably know from reading the report that currently, there's a window that leads out to that, and they're currently able to use it, but they would have to go out that window currently. The staircase would be to allow the easier use of the roof, the flat roof for entertaining. And the last thing I'll mention was that in 2011, I believe, there was a variation granted for the attached garage. It encroaches into the rear yard, was over the floor area. And those were the main variations back in 2011 for the attached garage.
Questions for Mr. Adler?
Was there any hardship in this case?
Well, the applicant could address that, but I believe that what the applicant was talking about was, this is an unusual shaped lot. But again, I'll let the applicant go into more detail. When the variation was granted for the garage, there was no garage at that time. And if you look at the, how the lot goes to a triangular shape to the rear, really was not easy to put a conforming garage. So, I believe in this case, they've got an area which I feel that they believe they should be able to use. It's not easily accessible currently, and that if this was a rectangular lot, they probably would, they might not be in this position, I think. But again, the applicant could go into more detail on that.
There might still be an FAR issue, but the lot would be bigger if it were squared off.
Correct.
Presumably. Yeah. Okay.
Do we know the age of the house? Did I miss that? The actual house?
1921, the applicant stated.
Other questions for Mr. Adler?
I couldn't find anything in the village code about rooftop decks. Do we have regulations?
We don't have regulations. Typically, well, typically, an attached garage like this would have met the setbacks, the rear yard setback. In this case, it was granted a 22-foot variation. There's a 25-foot setback. And so, this, in this particular case, it was allowed to be three feet back in 2011 when the variation was granted. And we wouldn't allow somebody to do a detached garage with a flat roof because that deck would be considered, that being considered also an encroaching deck into that rear yard, and that would be too high. But this was, this was a garage, a flat-roofed garage that was granted relief back in 2011.
So, when Mr. Adler says that there was, that there's no, nothing in the village code, he's correct as it comes to zoning and land use. There are building codes, though, just that requires certain construction standards.
I understand that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
I looked through the code to see if there was any reference to limitations on rooftop decks.
Right. We would, we would, we would treat this as a deck and the height of the deck off the ground and require it. We would allow it to encroach, I believe, it might be five feet into the required rear yard. But again, this was granted a variation in 2011. If this was a conforming attached garage, except for the floor area, we wouldn't be discussing the rear yard setback variation.
But I thought the current request is to add additional structure.
Well, it's the landing of the staircase. It's the staircase and the landing of the staircase. That's the structure that they're adding.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Yep.
Right. And that counts, that counts as floor area, the landing.
Correct. Yes. And because they're already over from the previous variation.
Right. So, I understand that there's no problem with the garage, but we should be talking about the stairway.
Right. Correct.
That's what I thought.
Other questions for Mr. Adler? Okay. Then I will, thank you. I will call up the applicant, please. Welcome. So, we've, we've obviously reviewed the report. We're familiar with the project. You can certainly take a few minutes to describe the project, but please focus your comments on the concerns raised by the zoning board. Now,
I will absolutely.
Mr. Adler already referenced that you had three yes votes, two no votes. You need four yes votes. The two members who were concerned about the impact on adjacent properties due to an increase in the intensity of use, I believe that's the phrase that was in their, their report.
Right. So, do you need name, address, or at that point?
Sure.
Hello. My name is Deena Fairmacher. This is my husband, John. We live at 624 Elmwood. And I just want to say thank you for your time because I know you have big, weighty issues to deal with. And we're respectfully asking for just a staircase to go to our existing rooftop deck. So, it amounts to a 26-square-foot variation. We did outline some of the hardships which, again, were mentioned here. If you have other questions and you want me to address those, I will. But I'd rather just get further so I don't waste your time. At the zoning board meeting, which you heard was unique, and we only had five people there, three of them voted in our favor. Mr. McCullough said, "There's no alteration to the garage. They want to use what's up there. It's a de minimis request adding no bulk." And we have been using that deck, but we've been accessing it through a window for which we have to go out onto a deck area that has no railing, climb down onto the area that does have a railing. And one of the board members at the time said, "Crawling through a window is obviously not a good solution." And he's right. It's not safe. So, we mentioned at the meeting that we had spoken with all of our neighbors at the time, and they said that they did not have any problem with it. And the zoning board chair went to one of the homes that is adjacent to ours, and he stood in the backyard and he said, "Boy, if that were me, I sure would have a problem with it." And we didn't have letters, so there was nothing to refute that, to which one of the board members told him, "None of the neighbors expressed this concern that you're bringing, and therefore she supported our request." At the time, it was our fault. We were remiss in not getting letters from our neighbors to show that they have zero problem with this, and you have copies of the letters now. Both of our adjacent neighbors who would be impacted are in support of this. In fact, the deck that we have on the lower level now, we can reach out and touch our new neighbors. It is a real infringement on privacy. And if we move back a little bit and up onto our garage rooftop deck that we had intended to use, it would actually afford them more privacy there. So, we're here to say that, since the argument that the neighbors would be in objection to this is no longer an issue, we think the zoning board chair would have voted yes. And so, we're respectfully asking for you all to vote yes. To give you some background and to answer some of your concerns, especially over safety issues, because it was intended to be a rooftop deck when we originally asked for this variance back in 2011, there are two-by-12 load-bearing supports on the rooftop. The decorative railing has 12-by-12 supporting posts every six feet. So, we built this to be a rooftop deck. However, at the time when I rehabbed the home, when we put the garage back away from the street, which is what we knew the village wanted, the neighbor behind us said, "Well, it's going to infringe on our sunlight." So, what we did to help him out and to be good neighbors was to move the garage. And when my architect came back to ask for the request again, after moving it and changing it to support our neighbors, he then neglected to ask for access to the rooftop deck. And I only found that out after he came home and he said, "It's all approved." I said, "Great." And then, all of a sudden, construction was finished. I'm like, "How do I get to my rooftop deck?" And he goes, "Ooh, I am sorry. I forgot." And at the time, the zoning board, one of the members said, "It was an obvious oversight by the architect, and she believes they intended to use the deck. And now, we're just trying to finally seek resolution for that. We have no sunlight in our yard. I have tried repeatedly to grow vegetables and herbs, and I cannot. I'm a complete failure. So, I want to use that property to be able to maximize the space in our yard, which is very, very small. We get no sunlight. We want to grow flowers, and we want to grow herbs and everything up there. So, it'll beautify it. It'll be environmentally sound, and it will also absorb some water because we want to put planters in there. So, we're here to just ask you to make good on something that should have happened years ago. We've tried to live with it and have had real challenges. And so, we respectfully ask for you to just give us access to what we have."
Questions for the applicant?
Sir, I was on the zoning board in 2011.
I know. I remember.
And that's, when I read this case, that's not how I recall the conversation. Because I think, you know, initially, it was coming in that it was a deck. The case was pulled and removed the deck, and we talked about decorative railing, and I actually think we even talked about some. The only access was through the window. It was odd to us why you weren't asking for it. And I think the zoning board, I can't, I mean, I can't speak for Abby and all the others that were on there, but I know I would have had an issue if it was a deck, and that's probably why it was pulled. So, to me, this seems like now that we're doing a little bit of variation creep in that we didn't ask for it in 2011. Now, we're asking for it. It's 30 feet or just a landing. That doesn't seem, that doesn't seem what I recall.
We're not trying to nickel and dime you. Our neighbor behind us, who no longer lives there, complained about the entire project. I rehabbed that home to try to keep it with the traditions of Willmet, beautifying it to look like the old brick Georgian that it is. And it had no garage at all. And so, we tried to build a garage. We tried to put it off the street, which is what we knew you wanted.
Yep.
And he complained about it. So, we pulled it because we had a neighbor who was objecting to A, B, and C. It's going to bother his light. It's going to bother his wind. And so, it was redesigned. And when it was redesigned, it was always still intended to be that. That's why we built it in the structure that it was. However, he just never put the access back in. It was honestly always designed to be that.
I have to admit that I was very confused reading the record as to whether it was really in the 2011 plan.
Well, if you look, the architect said when he came the second time that there's no roof deck. But that's not the way I understood it when I was asking for the variation at the time.
This was, it didn't, actually, it was when it came up, when we released the agenda, and it came up, and I hadn't seen it. But it was, it's one that unfortunately, it's in my, it's in the memory bank because I do remember that conversation. So, I didn't have to go back. I know, you know, you got a tough lot, and we agreed that that was a tough lot, needed a garage. We were willing to make the exception to get the garage, to get the cars off the street. But the rooftop deck, and the neighbor was, had some issues. We're putting a lot of structure back there, and this is exactly why the code was, is written to protect against that. The garage was acceptable, and I think we got, I know I got comfortable then. It was, now we're making a garage plus a rooftop deck. And that, that's where, my recollection is, it was pulled, so it wasn't going to be a rooftop deck. And that's what the minutes say.
It was pulled because the neighbor, because it was moved.
The architect says, and I know Chairman Duffy did, but it says, "There is no longer a deck in the proposal." That's directed from your architect.
That was not, that was not our intention. It was never my intention. He did that. I don't, I don't know why. And he told me not to come. So, I was not here. You remember, I was not here. He said, "You don't come. I handle these things. This is the way it's done. The architect does it." And I was naive in believing that that was the way it was done. And our neighbors now, who do all these construction projects without their approval from the village, just do it. And I respect the process, which is why I'm here. And I respected the process back then, and I trusted and believed him. And I unfortunately really, you know, sword end of it. There is virtually no yard to use. And so, we just want to be able to sit out and, you know, at sunset, enjoy a glass of wine on what is a deck in our...
Could you do a deck at grade?
I'm sorry?
Could you do a deck at grade and not have, not require the staircase? Could you do a deck in your backyard or patio or something where you could sit out there and enjoy it?
So, I would be asking for more space, and you would give me that more space?
Don't they, isn't there already a deck at grade?
The issue is, the issue is not
That's mine. Yeah.
That we could do a deck. The issue is, the, so, if you, you can't tell from this, but there's power lines running through the back of the yard on that diamond triangle there, subdivision. Okay. Over the years, the power company, because the trees sit on the neighbor's yards, the power, but the power company has trimmed them so they all grow like this. They all lean over our yard. We have complete shadow in our yard. We have no sunlight back there because of the trimming of the trees over the years. If we were to trim the trees, which we have a right to do, they would, it would be 20 feet up. We'd cut them right there. There'd be nothing left. They'd die because they're, that's where they all break into our yard. So, that's the issue is, the deck is in the sunlight. It's in the south side. The backyard is in the north side, where there is no sun. That's, that's the difference. Yes, we could play in our backyard, but that's, as we said, it's in complete shadow. It's not like there isn't a yard there. That's not what we're saying.
And so, we'd like to be able to grow things. We'd like to be able to...
No, I understand. So, what is, what is the hardship then for this additional FAR request? We already went over the FAR back in 2011.
The hardship is, we have no usable yard because of the shape of the yard, and we're asking to be able to use our property.
Excuse me. I think you have a yard. It's just in deep shade. And I think that is not uncommon in Willmet. And I don't think that it's normally considered a hardship that you've got a shady yard.
Well, if you walk around our neighborhood, there were people that obviously have been granted crazy variations because they have much more surface area on their yard than we're asking with our staircase. So, I guess I'm just confused as to why it's a problem because if you go to our neighborhood, each one of those little islands, as it were, that are similar to ours, people were given really wild variations.
Some of it may have been before there was a zoning code written as well. So, it could be a legal nonconforming structure.
Some of them look new. I mean, we just walk around the dogs.
New homes rarely get any variances. So...
But I didn't tear down this home. I purposely kept it because I wanted to do what the village wants. And I tried to do everything within the confines of what has been asked.
Trustee Bunkett.
Yeah. So, my question and point is, I didn't think we were here to discuss a rooftop deck. I thought we were only here to discuss the staircase. I mean, they're allowed to have a rooftop deck. There's nothing that says that you can't have a rooftop deck. I just, I want to clarify that. I don't think we're discussing whether or not...
I mean, that's, that's actually sort of the point that divided the zoning board on this, which was, you know, if you go back to 2011, you know, Trustee Sullivan's comment is, "This wasn't intended to be a deck on top of the roof when it was originally approved." I agree with you that right now, we're talking about 30 feet, 30 extra feet and a setback on a staircase from an irregularly shaped lot. The question is, how does the history of this property relate to that?
And I have nothing against the deck. That's not, that's not, that's not the point of the, I'm not, actually, the deck, what we were charged with as a zoning board is to reduce any variations. And at the time in 2011, we reduced the variation to not guarantee this access up to that rooftop deck. Now, we're being asked to grant access up there, which is the additional 30 feet. So, we minimized the variation as best we could to accommodate, really what was the hardship, was they wanted the cars off the street to put, to build a garage.
Right. And the irregular shaped lot.
That's why we approved a 5%.
Yields a setback and the like. But your point, I believe, is that at the time, part of that approval was sort of conditioned on the assumption that the roof was not going to be used regularly in that manner.
Well, no. I think what we did was, we, any staircase, any access was removed. We just approved a garage. How they used, and actually, the conversation was, we all knew that the, because we talked about it at the meeting, we knew the top of the garage was accessible through a window and that they most likely would be crawling through a window. It wasn't the best means, but that's what they were going to do in minimizing the FAR request at that time. Because they could have, I don't know what, I can't recall because the plans aren't in our notes anymore, what the original request was, whether it was a staircase as they're proposing today or not. But we minimized as best as possible the FAR request because the, the way it was presented to us is, we want, we want a garage. The property doesn't have a garage. We want a garage. That's reasonable.
So, excuse me, the original plan had the garage adjacent to the current deck, and there would have been stairs from the current deck, which would not have infringed on the variation space. We moved the garage to make the neighbor happy. When we did that, it was taken away from where our current deck is, so there would not be access. And that's why we need to go out over, and that's why we're asking for the variation. And to your point, we are using it and will continue to do so. And at the zoning board meeting, someone said, "What if we put a door where the window is? What if we roll up a set of staircase?" It would be ugly to do that. We're trying to do something, you see the house from the street, that is aesthetically pleasing for the village of Willmet, and to use the space in such a space in such a way where we could carry planters up there, we could plant vegetables, we could plant flowers. And we cannot do that when we're accessing it in the way that we are now. And I just feel like there's no downside for the village when we're talking about beautifying, making it environmentally sound, adding a water absorption in an area that floods.
And you're right, I remember you twisted it and moved it, because again, the neighbor had an issue with where it was, and the ABCs that you went through.
So where was the original, the original was?
On the side.
Directly behind the.
So the, I'm looking at 1-5 in the zoning board pack. Was it, was it right behind, so you had the deck and then the garage?
So where the addition was, it was supposed to be backed up to that. It would almost be adjacent to the addition, adjacent to the addition.
Yeah, the addition isn't shown on, the breakfast room.
Yes.
And Senta, to your point, back then, and I would say it now, yeah, if you put a door to that deck through the, convert the master window to a door, all for it, go for it. Or if you got the staircase inside the garage up there, I have no problem with that. This was to reduce the FAR, minimize the FAR.
And is there?
That's what was presented.
Mr. Adler, is there FAR if there's a staircase inside? Isn't there still FAR? I mean?
No.
The concern if it was inside would depend on whether the interior of the garage still has parking for two garages, two parking spaces. But besides that, no, there wouldn't be.
Okay, okay.
You can barely fit two cars now. Because we made it as small as possible.
Other questions for the applicant? Okay.
Can I just show an alternative, possibly?
Sure. If there's, if you pull out the, if you pull out the drawer on the side there, you can lay something down and we can have it projected. I'm not sure. Perfect.
So the deck we're proposing would go to the left and join a little, above that white door would be a little platform you could step on there. The alternative is to go, which we were told is no variation problem at all. We could go straight up where that 9.1 is from our existing back deck. We can run a stair right from where I am, up there, 9.1 feet into the air. Then we cross that little narrow deck, and you can't tell from here, but at the corner, it's only two and a half feet wide. Then walk across that, drop down again, four and a half feet to the existing load-bearing deck. That's the alternative, which we could do and would not need a variation for. What we're proposing is just run a stair directly along the sidewall from that deck. And it doesn't seem like any sort of encumbrance at all on the neighbors. They told us that. And the total variation increase would be the platform at the top of that deck, which is about, which would be about five by five.
So we're talking about going over the air-condition units, which is dead space right now with the staircase.
Did you get, I saw there were three letters from neighbors, east, west, and sort of the corner of 7th and Sheridan.
Well, the people there have a rooftop access as well. That's why we got them, because there was such a concern about infringing on being able to see your neighbors.
1125 seems to be the most impacted neighbor. 1125 Sheridan?
That's, no, no, no.
No, not at all. Can't see their yard at all from our home.
There's five trees between, you can see part of the tree on that picture, and they extend across the whole length of our yard, all the way covering 1125 and 1129 yards.
You can't see into those yards on Sheridan at all.
In fact, if you're on the ground, you do see into their yard under the trees at 1125. The most impacted are the ones that would stand behind me here, which is actually 628 Elmore, possibly.
630.
630.
Your neighbor to the west.
So our yard, our yard opens up to their yard with no, they moved in recently. They took down the fence and the bushes between the yards. And that was where.
Right, you can see, you can see the garage from the street, from 7th. You can, you can see it.
Yes.
So that's where Chairman Duffy stood in their yard and said that that would be a problem for him. So we brought a letter from them that clearly states that it's not a problem, and it actually encourages it.
And on the other side of that deck there, to the, if you're looking at our property, to the right, which is 1111 Sheridan Road, got a letter from them because we look into, would presumably look into their deck. But if we're on ground level, we're essentially at their deck, because we share a driveway. It just seems like we could exercise other options, all of which would be unsafe. And for a very simple request, we could do a safe option to use the space.
I'm looking for my picture of the proposed staircase. I brought so much stuff like.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the packet.
You have it in the packet, correct?
Okay.
It's on page.
I don't have your more recent packet. I don't.
It's on 212 of the, 212 of the PDF.
Okay, so you have it.
Because you took it out to show me earlier.
It's actually, I'd like to show it, because it's actually, I don't.
Well, it's appealing from the street, if you're looking at it. I think it's, as opposed to looking at just a brick.
Oh, gosh, where did that, was that, oh, you had it, thank you. So that's what we are proposing. And I was told that the variation includes everything over six foot six, or that the additional VAR, is that what it's called?
FAR, FAR, floor area ratio.
Right. So it's basically just that deck and two steps below the platform, which would add to our floor area ratio.
Right, which is already over. That's, that's sort of the point that Trustee Sullivan's making. You're already over, and you're asking for more.
Yes. But I, I know, I had this problem with the zoning board. They said, I don't believe you that your neighbors don't have a problem. And now you're telling me you don't believe me that I'm not going to come and nickel and dime you today. That's not the case.
I did not say, don't take it that I don't believe you. And I agree that that's a nicer look, and that's right. But I, where I.
This is what I intended all along, and I tried to live with what happened.
But you might not have got this approved way back when. That's the thing I think you should be aware of.
I don't think it would have been, but, but why wouldn't it have been approved?
For the very reasons that the zoning board had issue with it now, and it was before the fact.
The zoning board only had issue with the neighbors.
No, 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 no. We did minimize the FAR.
Back in 2011.
And the main request was, we want a garage so we can get our cars off the street, which we all support. So again, had you come in with this 30 feet, we would have said, do you really need that, or is there ways to minimize it? I can't, I mean, now that's eight years ago. I don't know what, maybe, others would ask that. But that would have been my question of, how do we minimize this? Because you are, you are asking for a 5%.
Minimize the amount of the.
Yes.
Yeah, minimize the, minimize the variation that we request. That was really what our position was.
In terms of percentages, how much further are we over than most to a?
Because we're 4.7 or something like that, but.
Most aren't over. That's the point.
And most have to live with it.
Most aren't over the FAR. And new homes aren't allowed a single foot over, you know? And I, it's interesting, I had a conversation.
Well, that's not true.
That is true.
That is true.
If you look further south on Sheridan Road, around the Washington or Lake area, there's five houses in the triangle there that are fairly new, I believe, that have, they all share one backyard.
We haven't, Mr. Adler can, can clarify this, but the zoning, zoning variances aren't granted for new construction.
Okay, so I don't know the date line.
No, they look like additions to.
Yeah.
Right.
They're additions to all their properties.
Anything that's been done since 1990. Now, there may have been some existing homes that received variations to put additions on. We'd have to look up the addresses to find them out. But you could tell you new construction in that area, there was no variations.
Mr. Adler, another question for Mr. Adler. Sorry. So Mr. Adler, when did we, I noticed this is a, basically a 20 by 20 garage. And I think we've changed the zoning code to make the standard 22.
Right.
And when was that?
That was in 2014, I believe, with the change of the code.
Okay, so I just want to point out that basically, if they would have come in for a variance for a garage, even though there was nothing, you know, even though they didn't have it, we probably would have granted now a 22-foot garage. And that extra FAR more than compensates for the, for the staircase.
For a garage.
For, for a garage. I understand, but that's obviously more bulk.
That's where we got comfortable, or I got comfortable with. The hardship here for me was, it's an irregular lot that didn't have a garage, so we wanted to get the 400 feet. At the time, that was standard, logical. To give more for something else, what was the hardship?
You might or might not have done that.
We might not have.
Wasn't the hardship?
What is the hardship for this FAR variation? And from what I hear today, the hardship is, we want, we have sunlight on here, we don't have sunlight on our main yard.
So the initial hardship was needing a garage, and the fact that because of the nature of where you wanted me to put the garage, I had to take away my yard. So the hardship was twofold. It was lack of property yard space and a need for a garage. So I could have put a garage right by the front of the house and, you know, gone in double side.
It may not have gotten approved.
It may not have, but what I'm saying is, I really jumped through hoops to try to make this the way you all wanted it. And by doing that, I infringed on my own space. And in order to get a garage, then, so the hardship was twofold. It was not having really any yard and not having a garage.
Right, but understand that, that, you know, throughout Willmet, small lots have smaller homes, big lots have bigger homes. The hardship really is the shape of your lot, which allows the, first off, you don't have a garage, and yes, in general, with your garage bonus, you're going to get an FAR variance to build a garage. And you're going to get a setback variance because you have an irregularly shaped lot. So those are, that's your approval that you got. What Trustee Sullivan is pointing out, that beyond that, anything beyond that, including the 30 feet, might or might not have gotten approved back then. Yes, your garage and your setback, those are likely to have gotten approved back then because you didn't have a garage. So that's, I think that's the point he's making, that you could have asked for this. Yes, you meant to ask for this. It might not have got approved. They might be having the same conversation right now, saying, you know, we're not sure you do that.
But we have no idea what would have happened back then. So now let's look at what's happening right now.
And your first request, again, I go back to the minimization, we were minimizing the impact to the neighbors.
Yes.
That's what the seven standards required for. So that's why, unfortunately, if you really wanted the garage, we had to move it, which did take away some of your yard. But that was your choice.
Because I was being neighborly and trying to do what you wanted me to do.
No, no, it wasn't being neighborly, it's following our code.
Okay.
That's what our code is. And that's where, you know, again, minimizing the impact to the neighborhood, and that's where ultimately we had to settle. That wasn't your first choice. I mean, the neighbors probably didn't want anything, you know, would want more open space. But it wasn't your first choice, but you got a garage. And we minimized it as best we can back in eight years ago. So.
All right, so further questions for the applicant?
Wait just a second, yeah.
Go ahead.
So the garage was constructed in 2011, 2012, roughly? And now you're coming about the staircase?
This is what I said in the beginning. I didn't find out about this until the construction was completed. And I said, where's my access? And he said, ooh, sorry, I made a mistake. I didn't ask for it. And then I said, all right, well, I'm going to try to live with it. And right below, to the, if you look at that picture, to the left of the post, I've tried to plant gardens, and I've tried to sort of maximize the space that I can. And it has driven me crazy for all of this time. And finally, my husband is creative enough to say, you know, we could actually just do this and access. And I thought, okay, well, let's try. And all of our neighbors said, just do it. And I said, no, I wouldn't do that. I'm going to follow the rules. I'm going to come in, I'm going to ask for approval.
And understand that, yes, it took us eight years to get here, but we've been using it. It's not as though we just decided, hey, maybe we could do a deck up there. We have furniture up there right now.
We go and sit up there, and we.
I understand. It's just that if it was the architect's mistake, I would have expected you to correct it right away. And instead of waiting eight years, that's just what surprises.
They were two months overdue on the process. I lived with my four kids in a hotel room in that time. That was not a priority. It was getting into my home. It was getting them to finish the 150-unit punch list. There are a lot of things when you do new construction, or when you do construction on a home, that is much more of a priority than this would be. And then at that point, I said, well, if this is what it is, I'm going to try to live with it. And then it has become challenging. Each time I go up there, I'm like, I could grow my tomato plants up here. I could grow mint, I could grow basil, I could, and it, it's just too hard to get all this stuff through a window to do that. We want to build planters up there and have vegetable garden. And so I just.
Other questions for the applicant? Okay, any other questions for Mr. Adler? Okay, take a seat, don't go far.
Okay.
So let me ask now, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? I know for the record, nobody was interested. So as we've been doing on zoning cases to facilitate our discussion, I'll ask the trustees to indicate which way they're leaning. Straw poll's been useful to try and move the discussion along, so. But I will tell you right now, I'm not sure myself, so I'm not going to raise my hand tonight. So if you're leaning in favor, please raise your hand. If you're leaning against, please raise your hand. And then, okay, so, Trustee Barrow, why don't you start us off? Why, what's your thoughts on this one?
Well, I've stood in the backyard of this property today, and I am convinced that it's an unusual shape. It's, it's a yard that really isn't usable in the sense that all of us think about our yards, and that the use of the deck is probably the most appropriate use for their backyard. And to, to access the deck by crawling through a window seems to me an absurd answer. I've done that many a time, and it's not very pleasant.
Have you done it recently? I guess it's my question.
Need a younger back. But what, the variance that they're asking for now, and now I think needs to be our focus, not what was, what was or wasn't in the mind of the zoning board all those years ago. It's the case before us. And I think the case before us has a small request that's supported by the neighbors, that's really the appropriate use, the very best use for that backyard. So I support it entirely.
Okay, Trustee Sullivan, why don't you give us your point of view?
Look, it is a minimal request. It's probably the right access for that deck. I don't disagree with that. But again, I think, you know, there's no hardship in my mind for going over our, outside of our ordinance for this, as minimal as it is. And I don't think we should minimize it, whether it's 30 feet or 300 feet. It is an irregular lot, and I agree with that. But that doesn't, irregular lots don't get an automatic pass just to go against our zoning ordinance or more exceptions. And we did that for the right thing to get parking off the street. I just, I don't see the hardship in granting this FAR request to further increase the over allowance.
You know, and I'm, I'm, look, I'm sort of torn here, because you're definitely weighing the amount of hardship. The irregular lot yields some hardship, okay? I think we can agree on that. The question is, how much hardship is that relative to the amount of the variance you should give? You know, is, is that enough hardship to allow for this extra variance or not? I'm, I'm torn on this one, because I agree with, I think I agree more with Trustee Barrow that, you know, this isn't that big of an ask. The neighbor's concern has been addressed, at least, you know, the immediate two neighbors. And so if they're okay, now, I will point out that when you move into a new house, and your neighbor says, hey, will you support my zoning variance? It's not very neighborly to say, I don't know you yet, and I'm not sure I will. So you have to take that a little bit with a grain of salt. But it, it doesn't seem like that much to me either. Trustee Punktet, you were also leaning towards it.
What the board did, when we approved it, we reset what we were comfortable with, the FAR over allowance. Now we're once again going over again.
And that's the decision, right. And that is, you know, to Trustee Barrow's point, that is the decision in front of us tonight. Do we want to allow an extra 30 feet or not to allow for access to the roof, for easier access to the roof, to allow for more enjoyment of the roof?
And it is 4,300 square FAR right now. That's a big, there's a lot of, that's a lot of FAR, bigger than most houses. So.
Right, but again.
Now, we reset that to zero, you know, when we got comfortable with it, so.
The reason you have that is because there was no garage, and that's not an uncommon, it's not an uncommon variation to allow someone to build a garage.
Correct. And that's why it got approved. That's why we got comfortable back then with the 400, or, yeah, request.
So Trustee Punktet, your thought?
Well, sure. A couple of things. I think this FAR is not, I mean, it's an open staircase. Visually, it's not an addition. You can see through it. It does not affect impervious surface. It's, you know, the posts, it's de minimis if it affects impervious surface at all. So I think you can make a distinction between, you know, an addition that adds
at all. So I think you can make a distinction between, you know, an addition that adds a solid footprint versus this open staircase. I also think that if they had asked for a garage today, because of our new zoning code, we probably would have allowed the garage to be larger than we did. And I think that that would have been a significant visual impervious surface impact, everything, and that this staircase is, is just not that big of a deal.
So Trustee Kersman, what do you think here?
So even without Trustee Sullivan's background information, which I found very helpful, you know, I saw the history of variance requests from this property, and I don't, I disagree with Trustee Barrow that it's all about here and now. I do think context is important. And I did see, and I am concerned at the prospect of variances, beginning variances. And only to get this additional insight from Trustee Sullivan sort of solidifies that. I don't agree that, you know, that we would for sure grant a larger garage in this instance. I respectfully disagree with Trustee Plunkett on that. And, you know, I think more than anything, though, the hardship is not there for me. So, you know, that's where I'm at.
Trustee Kennedy?
I'm really torn, because I think that Trustee Plunkett's point is well taken about it being an open staircase that doesn't really change the impervious surface, and so it doesn't have the same, sort of, impact on the structure and the appearance that a solid, like a shed, for example, would add to it. At the same time, I'm troubled by the idea that having a shady yard is a hardship. I don't think it's the irregular lot that's the problem. I think what they're really complaining about is they don't have sun. And they have sun on the deck, and they want access to sun on the deck. But lots of us, lots and lots and lots of people in Will Matt, live in very, very shady yards. It's what we, in some ways, are very proud of, is having a sort of semi-forested village. And I, if that becomes a hardship, what kind of precedent are we setting for other situations in which people want to tear down trees, or to get more sun, or create other rooftop decks in situations where it's not necessary because they want to access sun? And I hate to set that precedent. I think that's what I'm mostly concerned about.
So, in knowing my own perspective now, and you're sort of the, if you lean in favor of this, then we've got a 4-2 vote, which is not enough to get it approved. But potentially, when Trustee Dodd is back, could be the five votes necessary to get it approved. If you're leaning against it, then we have three against, and even if Trustee Dodd were here, it would be four to three, and it would not get approved. So, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but, right now at least, because if you, if you said, well, I think I can support this, though, then what I would suggest is that we table the matter until the next board meeting, when Trustee Dodd could be here. So, I don't know if you're following the logic here. You need five votes. You might have four, and Trustee Dodd might be your fifth vote. So it's not going to get, even, no matter what Trustee Kennedy says now, it's not going to get passed tonight. And if she's against it, it won't get passed regardless of how many members of the board are here. If she's for it, or if she would just say, well, you know what, I'm happy to wait, I'm happy to wait a month. Well, no, that's the reality of the circumstances.
Yeah, I really love this.
So, if, or if you're on the fence, you say, I don't know, maybe in a month I would be in favor of it, then there's a chance that it gets approved. If you're probably against it, then we shouldn't waste their time or the board's time, because it's not going to pass in a month anyways. So again, hate to put you on the spot here, but...
No, it's my job to be on the spot. I understand that. I guess I'm leaning against it. But if there's interest in tabling it till there's more opinions, I'm fine with that, too.
So I'm going to suggest that I entertain a motion to table this to our next Village Board. Maybe the applicant would come up here for a moment. So I think you've been following our math here. So I'm going to recommend that we table this.
Good journalist, glad you had.
And that we table this to the next board meeting, when you would have a chance potentially to get this approved. But understand, right now at least, it's not looking very favorable. So, so would you, would you like to request that this be tabled to the next board meeting?
I have to make a formal request to do that? Okay.
I mean, I can offer it up, but it's easier if the applicant requests it to be tabled. We could vote now. Or would you, would you rather have us table it to the next meeting?
I request that we table this, please, to hope that Trustee Dodd will be more in our favor.
Okay, so, and understand that if it is 4-3, that's still not enough.
It still doesn't, yeah.
Right, you still need five, you need one of the, one of the negative votes to rethink their point of view on this before the next meeting. So, all right, so there was a request to table. Can I have a motion?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm actually going to call the roll on this one. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the motion to table this to the August, what's our next meeting date?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-third, twenty-seventh.
Well, it's very good that you know, Barb, because you're not going to be here, so you shouldn't care. That should have been your response, I don't care what it is.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
August 27th. Okay, so the request is to table this until the August 27th meeting.
Okay.
And I'll have you to call, please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett? Aye. President Blinckton?
Aye, okay, so the motion carries. The case has been tabled. We'll see you in a month. We don't have, we don't have a board meeting the first, the second Tuesday of August, it's the fourth Tuesday of August.
August 27th.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to Trustee Barrow.
Uh, no, no further matters.
And now we are on to one more presentation for Trustee Kennedy.
Okay, we wanted to present the fiscal year 2019 mid-year financial review.
Okay, so.
Our finance director, Melody, is here. She can answer questions. Do you have any questions?
And the deck begins on page 229 of the zoning board, oh, sorry, of the Village Board packet, if you want to follow it on your iPad instead.
Good evening, trustees. Really, what's going to happen is, as normally happens when we do some of these dialogues, myself, as well as Mike and Tim, we all kind of work collaboratively, and we're going to kind of change off between the slides. So this first slide that you have in front of you, Mike wanted to sort of introduce what the presentation is going to be this evening.
Thank you. So we're doing our mid-year financial review a little bit differently this year. One, we're doing it at a board meeting, and not a separate committee of the whole, and that's just because we have a lot of matters coming up on our agenda. We're going to be busy with a lot of other topics. And we're a little bit earlier than usual. Usually, we do this mid to late August. And at that meeting, we were seeking direction from the Village Board on the water rate, the sewer rate, the property tax levy, and which CIP projects to include in the proposed budget. So when we give you a budget, it's meeting your expectations. Because we're a little earlier this year, we're simply going to present our projections, and explain and highlight our CIP projects, to give the board some time to digest all of that. And part of the reason being is, this is going to be a more difficult budget year than years past. And we think the next several budget years are going to be more difficult, as revenues continue to stagnate, water consumption is down significantly, impacting the water and sewer funds. We have a lot of difficult decisions that are going to have to be made. So we wanted to get in front of the board early, present these projections, allow the trustees time to think and reflect, as we have more meetings throughout the year prior to our October budget workshop.
And I just want to point out that Trustee Dodd is absent tonight, but she already had the opportunity to walk through this information with Mr. Bremen, so she is, she's actually more up to speed than we are at this point in time, so.
So I think the other thing I wanted to dovetail to Mike's comments, is that we've had some of these discussions already. So when I met with you back in March, when we've even talked about the pensions, when we've talked about the stormwater fee, we've always couched it in terms of what we were understanding was happening with our finances as we ended FY 2018, and what we knew was going on currently in FY 2019. So my hope is that, between those discussions, as well as the monthly report that was part of your packet, this would give you a lot of detailed information, yet again, in terms of specifics on each of the revenue and expenditure items, to help give you more context in terms of what's going on. But my hope is that you're going to walk away from this, not feeling like you didn't sort of know about some of these items already. So, general fund. This slide here is telling you the highlights of the revenues and the expenditures. I'm going to turn to the next slide right away. And this is going to be a familiar slide, too, because we always include it in the monthly reports, and this is usually how we talk about our revenues and expenses. So on the revenue side, you know that the arrows going down is a bad sign for us. The arrows going up are a good thing. But I think really, the highlights are, number one, we are expecting right now that revenues are going to be up about $145,000 from where we projected when we put the budget together. What's causing that? The bright spots are really income tax. It continues to outperform, and there's more context in terms of what is going on with income tax, from the perspective of the state, the Department of Revenue. And the interesting thing about the commentary that's in there is, they're not quite sure what's going on, other than to attribute it to a change in behavior that's going on right now. And it was the non-withholding tax that they were talking about was up. So it would be people's withholding related to...
The capital gains.
Thank you very much, the capital gains.
So, estimated tax payments, quarterly tax payments related, and they think it's driven by non-wage stuff like capital gains or something like that.
You are correct. It was April in particular, that was the month, if you looked at the charts that I have that show you kind of on a month by month what's happening, April was the month that went way above. And so that's where they're still continuing to look into it, to understand why.
Trustee Kennedy, given all the conversation about increasing state tax rates, it's certainly possible that people might be accelerating capital gains or something like that, if they feel like they were coming in the next year or so. Is that, you are the tax expert on the board now?
I'd be surprised.
Okay.
Because there's no particular rate set, and when you're talking about 1%, I don't, you know, I don't think that's...
Yeah, right, it's not, it's not as big as like, when cap gains would go from 28 to regular or something.
Right, if you're talking about a change at the federal level, there would be, there'd be activity.
Okay, so you don't think, you don't think the state conversation's enough to drive behavior here, just because it's so small? Okay.
No.
Okay.
And again, no, and to your point, when you read the commentary that I have in here from the Department of Revenue, and actually, it's from CAGF, and they work with the Department of Revenue on this, they still don't have an explanation as to what caused it. They're just surmising that that is one of the reasons for it.
Well, and I have heard, and I am not an expert in this, that because of the volatility of the stock market in the last few months, that some people are exiting. And that also could cause a...
And they talk about the volatility.
Right, no, that's, that's a very good point, because I know our firm people, people were very concerned, right, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
So as we're having that discussion right now, and we're not exactly sure why, except for these, these reasons that we have, that is one of the bright spots in terms of what's going on. So we think right now that income tax is going to be up about $200,000 from when we built the 2019 budget. Non-recurring permits, this again is up, it's up about $480,000, but it is offset by regular permit activity, is actually down about $120,000 from where we expected it to be. That's a cautionary statement for us. But we've talked about that before, that we were seeing that even earlier in the year, and it's continuing to happen. And then the other item that has been an outperformer has been income tax, interest receipts. And that I have some concerns about, as there's a discussion of the rates coming down yet again, potentially. So what's on the other cautionary side of this? We have sales tax that is underperforming from where our expectations are. I already talked about the regular permits are down, and real estate transfer tax is down. So that's down roughly $150,000 so far this year. And there's quite a bit of commentary that's talking about what's going on. But even our own data was already confirming what we were hearing from the real estate agents.
Right, and we had budgeted, my recollection is, we had budgeted sales tax down...
Yes, we did.
Because of the lost businesses that we've got. And we were also pretty conservative on real estate transfer tax, weren't we?
Yes, we were.
Right, and we're missing.
Yes.
Okay. So that is concerning.
The concern here is, where is the revenue growth going to come from for 2020, as we're trying to balance our budget and relieve pressure on the property tax levy? And, you know, as Melinda's talking about, the $200,000 in income tax, if that's not something that we think is going to be recurring, then we are going to have some revenue issues as we move into the 2020 budget, that are going to be difficult to offset with the existing revenue portfolio we have.
I seem, I seem to remember that there's a note in here that you don't expect increased sales tax revenue from Eden's Plaza till '21?
Correct.
And, and that's based on discussions with the developer?
Yes.
We're going to have an update from the developer later this week. But there's going to be a lot of likely construction and renovation to the existing structure and the facility before new tenant can, can be there, plus some zoning relief as well. So that is all going to take time. And given the three-month lag on sales tax receipts as well, I think 2021 is most likely.
So again, concerns that we have right now. And we're going to continue to monitor it, and we're going to continue to keep you updated in terms of what is happening. But those right now are definitely areas that we have concerns with. On the expense side, we're actually over budget by about $106,000. And this shouldn't come as a surprise, because in particular, there have been some expenditure items related to roadwork that we approved that were not considered in the original budget. So think the $200,000 that we're going to use for street patching, and we also increased some of the other line items as well. So this is an area that, again, we see some that are up, some that are down. But really, what's driving this right now is the unbudgeted items that we hadn't anticipated when we built the budget. But are items that, from a policy perspective, we believe that we should go forward with.
And those are, those show up in the capital, the capital line, right?
Yes.
The 3-7 to the 3-9.
Yep, and I called those out in the report as well.
Right.
And in the contingency line item, the big dollar amount there is that North Suburban Employee Benefit Cooperative Special Assessment, that's our health insurance. So we are self-funded with a group of 10 other communities on the PPO product. The HMO product is fully funded. We had mentioned in our last quarterly financial update that there may be a special assessment because reserves have dipped below 10%, which is in, doesn't conform with the policy of the cooperative. We've now confirmed we are going to have to pay that special assessment, and that's $215,000, which is one month of our PPO payment. And while we're still under budget in the contingency line item, we, that line item is really appropriation authority. We don't assume we're going to spend that in our cash flows when we're putting together our budget. So that $215,000 is essentially coming right out of the reserve. We did not anticipate spending that money, but we have the authority in there in case it happens.
Just, just to restate what Mike's saying on that, we don't levy taxes to cover the contingency. It's just there. So the legal authority exists to spend it, but we don't have the authority, we don't, we haven't, we haven't counted on that money coming in.
You're correct.
But I take it that that's a one-time expenditure. Are we not expecting that to be a recurring feature of the budget going forward?
Correct, in terms of what I'm going to call the 13th payment that we're making.
Yes.
Yes, and we've already accelerated the payment. So whether or not people realized it or not, it showed up in the controlled disbursement reports. So really, I will have, we will end up booking 13 payments this year, and it's going to just be, as far as we know right now, a one-time occurrence that's going to happen.
Right, and that, that could change, depending on how the cooperative performs the rest of this year and the next year, because we're still teetering on the line of where our reserves need to be. This is just getting us to a somewhat comfortable point. But our hope is that we will not repeat this in future years.
If we continue along, if this bears out now for the rest of the year, at some point, I will need to come back and probably do a supplemental appropriation ordinance, so that we're not overspending the general fund. Just, again, just a side note to let you know. Are there any other questions about the expenses for the general fund? So, what this means then, in terms of our reserves, we know that we ended 2018, remember, we've talked about it before, in a very healthy position. So we still are, in terms of what our reserves look like right now, they are still very healthy. And I want to remind you that we have already discussed using $200,000 of the reserves to help us start the process for the 15-year rolling amortization on the pension fund. So that's just another cautionary thing to think about as we go forward. And we talk about 2020 and other uses of the reserves that we might have.
And so the, the rating agency guidance is 30% of operating expenses is where they'd like to see reserve?
Right.
And did we decide that we're going to set the operating reserve or the total reserve, that we're going to target that for?
I think what we were talking, when Moody's looks at us, they look at the total.
Right.
So they're taking into consideration the SURF. I think when we were looking at things, and it might be our next slide, no, it's not, we were talking about the operating piece.
Yeah, okay, so my, my quick math was 10.6 million roughly, that would be 30%. And so our estimate is, while above, it's not wildly above, and that doesn't include, or that does include the $200,000 to, for the pension stuff.
Correct.
It does or doesn't include it?
It, in the way that we're looking at things, I already know that we're going to tap into that margin that's over. So let's just say that that margin that we're over right now is roughly $800,000.
Okay.
So if we're going to use the $200,000, then we're down to $600,000. That, right now, I'm thinking that when we go into budget discussions, that that's what we'll be talking about, what we're going to utilize that monies for.
Okay, okay.
But to Amplifier Point, the 30% was supposed to be based on the operating reserve.
Right.
Correct.
Because the SURF is already...
The SURF, because the SURF is already allocated.
It's already spoken.
It's there in an emergency, but it's already allocated.
In some ways it creates an additional buffer when Moody's is looking at us.
Right. Because in addition to putting a portion of the non recurring revenue that we get, we actually budget department expense that goes into the SURF. So in essence, the depreciation, you know, everybody gets a capital allocation that gets tossed into the SURF.
Correct.
And it's funded out of operations.
Yes.
So.
So if I can get the mouse to cooperate with me, I think on these next slides, then Mike is going to start delving into some of the particulars from the 2020 CIP.
So the next couple of slides are going to address the general fund portion of the CIP, and I think it's helpful to think about funding the CIP in the four buckets of where the dollars come from. So that's how we presented the slides. There's your general operating bucket, and that's from your property tax, your sales tax, income tax and all that that Melinda had talked about earlier. We then have our SURF projects, which are our vehicle and equipment replacements. That's from those non recurring building permits and some of the transfers from the operating departments out of their budgets. And then there's the water fund and the sewer fund. So they're not all competing against each other, but when you look at the general operating bucket, these are the projects that we're trying to prioritize based on the monies available from operations. We will talk about just really the first three projects because I think given where we're at, that's probably all we'll be able to fund at best in 2020. The department heads are here. If you have any questions, any of the projects on the page or anything else in the binder, this would be a good time to ask and get those answered as we contemplate what we want to do moving forward. So the first project roofing, that was the only project marked as critical in the operating section of the 2020 CIP. These are repairs on an existing roof that would help extend the life of that roof. So I think there were about 50 spots that needed these repairs on that one roof. So we want to get that addressed before the roof gets to the point where it needs a complete reconstruction.
So patching.
It's patching. This is roof patching.
Okay.
But in the year following this, in 2021, there is a large expenditure proposed, I think about $570,000 for the trust garage at Public Works. So that was proposed in 2020 after discussions with the Public Works Department, we felt comfortable deferring that a year, but that's something to put on your radar. There's a big expense coming over at the Public Works Yard in terms of roof repairs in the next couple of years. Server room configuration, some trustees may recall this being discussed for several years now. I think staff is at the point where we're, we're going to recommend we fund this and move forward and do this at the Village Hall. There is a second project at the Public Works Facility that's not as critical. Our main, our main servers for our financial software and our phone system and email are here at Village Hall. So I think we're going to be able to squeeze that 17,500 in next year. And then the big number is the comprehensive plan. And when we did talk about this at last year's CIP meeting, we did defer it a year. The plan was last comprehensively updated in 1990. There was a smaller update in 2000 and the Village Center Master Plan in 2010. So it's certainly due for a full update and refresh. One of the reasons we feel it's important also to, to move this forward is that we want John Adler to be the individual leading this project. And we, you know, we would like to get that started in the next year or two because this is a two-year project most likely. So we want to get this going, if not 2020, 2021, so we can get that done. We're not.
Mr. Adler's not going to defer his retirement just for the CIP, the sake of the CIP?
I asked him to. It wasn't well received. So this is something that we, we're not going to be able to make a decision on tonight, but we want to start thinking about that because as we talk about spending down the excess reserve, the only way we're going to be able to fund this next year is through that reserve, which means it would take additional monies away from potential road program investments. So we want the board to start thinking about that and thinking about priorities, but if we don't pull this out of reserve for 2020, it's really something we would have to do in 2021. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with that. When we meet in, in late September to talk about the road program, we'll have more information on our reserve, how much excess is available, and we'll also have a better feel for how much money we're looking to spend additionally on roads next year. And then you can prioritize how you want to fund this project. The other projects, carpeting replacement, it's, it's definitely needed, but it's something we can defer over time, but they are starting to become trip hazards and we won't go through the rest, but these have all been on the CIP for years and have been deferred for years and we can continue to defer them, but at some point we will have to do these. They just haven't reached the level of criticality where we're, we're saying we need to do it in 2020.
And are any of these items of sufficient length in terms of asset, asset life that you would consider bond proceeds to fund them? I mean, most of it seems not, you know, this isn't, this isn't a new building or a new roof. This is, this is more R and M, it seems like.
Those don't seem to be bondable ones. Not, I'm not ideal.
So this is the SURF, our second bucket, the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund. Usually we've primarily funded vehicles through this, but we're getting to the point where there's some pieces of equipment that are coming due, and we believe the SURF is an appropriate funding vehicle for that type of equipment. We're listing these in order of priority of how we would plug them into the budget next year. SURF, a little bit different from the general operating slide, we have more dollars available and more flexibility to do this work because of the money we've been setting aside. So it's about 1.4 million dollars. That's a big SURF expenditure for next year and we're going to see if we can whittle this down a little bit and maybe defer some items, but keeping in mind, any deferral just means we're going to have to do it a year or two. This isn't something we cannot not do. We have to do them. So the fire SCBA's, this is the most important piece of safety equipment for our firefighters. It's what they wear when they're on the fire scene and helps them breathe. It has a lot of safety features. The newer versions do that. Our model doesn't have now. We're two series behind. This is something that we have to really do in 2020. We're going to be applying for a grant and we're cautiously optimistic we can qualify for that grant. That would significantly offset this cost, but we think we need to plug in that full budget number in case we don't receive the grant, which we may not know until much later in the year. Police squad cars, they're on a four-year replacement cycle. This is something that is really difficult to defer past four years. We used to be on a three-year cycle until the recession and fours stretches it out to about 100,000 miles per squad and these get run, get run on a regular basis. Something exciting this year is that we're going to pilot hybrid squad cars. So this will be the first model being produced by Ford of a hybrid squad. And this is part of the discussion that came out of last year's budget workshop where the board had asked us to look at green fleet alternatives for all of our vehicle purchases. So when you're approving contracts at Village Board meetings for vehicles this year, you're seeing an analysis of whether there was a green option, and that is also now contained in your CIP documents. So for every vehicle proposed for 2020, there is a cost benefit analysis conducted for a green fleet option and for the police squads, it seemed to make sense. So we're going to try it out. Police has taken a look and feels comfortable with the pilot program, but we really need to see how they perform in winter. So we're going to do all four of the hybrid version and then we'll come back to the board with a report and how that went. Large dump truck, this is year five of six of a dump truck replacement program. Years ago, we had bought all six at once and we've been staggering these one a year so that we don't have to buy six all again at one time. So this is important to keep that project going and this is one of our core snow and ice control vehicles. Ambulance, this is going to be a 10-year-old ambulance. We run three in the fleet, we cycle them out. They run more than many other vehicles in the village other than a police squad and we think it's critical to get this replaced as well. So that's kind of your top four in terms of critical SURF items we need to do next year. The other items are also very important and we, we want to include them because if we don't, we're basically pushing two years' worth of SURF projects into 2021. So we're going to be working on these and seeing where we can relieve a little bit of pressure, but we're going to fund as many of these as we can. Couple of others, just to point out briefly, the council chamber AV system, this is 10 years old. It's dated technology, it's, it's needing repairs on a somewhat regular basis, where we've spent thousands of dollars in the last couple of years. It was a $260,000 investment, so it's a not, not a complete replacement of the system, but it's upgrades that are needed to keep it functioning. And that may be something we can float for a year or two, but that bill is coming due.
Yeah, we rarely say anything worth listening to up here, so maybe we could.
And I want to point out the utility vehicle in the fire department. This is part of the department's continued efforts at reducing the size of our fleet. So you may recall, a couple of years ago, the chief had proposed eliminating one of our large quints, I believe. The chief's nodding his head, so I'm right on that. Reducing the fleet from eight to seven vehicles, he's now proposing to reduce it to six. So we would take two very large pieces of apparatus out of our fleet over a couple of years, which significantly reduces our future replacement and our maintenance costs. So this, this is a two-vehicle replacement project. The first is the utility vehicle, which would then serve as a backup for our rescue squad. And we need to pilot that and see how that works and make sure that functions as intended before we can do year two, which is an 825,000 replacement of a pumper engine that would then serve functions of basically a fire pumper and our special rescue squad, technical rescue team, dive team. So it's an exciting opportunity and to be able to move the entire reduction plan forward, we do have to replace the utility vehicle first. So if we don't do it in 2020, we can do it in 2021, but that pushes back removing one of those vehicles from our fleet.
Are we able to reduce those trucks because they're more efficient today or we're partnering with other communities or are we doing it for only financial reasons?
I'm going to have the chief come up.
So the two vehicles that we're going to be replacing, one is the rescue squad that does not have a pumper on it. So typically it's just for special rescue. So it does not go on, it's not a fire suppression vehicle. The engine is a pumper squad, is a pumper. The new vehicle would combine both of those utilities. So it'd be like having a special rescue truck with the ability to pump and have hose on it. So it's considerably bigger, so that's why it's an extra $200,000 as opposed to.
And so are you taking, are you taking a pumper out of service and a pumper and the rescue vehicle and replacing it with the combined vehicle?
Correct.
So that's how you're getting down, so the functionality's still there, but you're getting down one vehicle?
One vehicle. So instead of having a standby fire engine to be the backup for Engine 27 or the tower, we would have the special rescue combined, be both. It would be the special rescue vehicle and it would be the standby vehicle for anything that goes out for repairs.
And from a, you know, from a utilization point of view and a safety point of view, that all holds together? I mean, because it's a backup, because it was a, the pumper was sitting around, it was a backup vehicle and not used very often?
Correct.
Okay. Because like, we don't have people, when you say backup vehicle, that's if one of the other vehicles is in the shop. It's not like we have people that could drive it otherwise on staff.
It's twofold. So it's, we use it as a standby vehicle, so it's equipped with everything that the frontline vehicle has. So if we go to an emergency and we push the ignition and for some reason that vehicle doesn't start, that personnel can jump right over to that reserve piece of equipment and respond. It's also used in the event of fires in town or larger incidences out of town. When we do a callback and our equipment is either on the scene in Wommet or on the scene in a different community, that vehicle is in staff by off-duty personnel that come in.
Got it. Okay. So big fire or, you know, Women's Club or Evanston Fire?
Right.
And we're out there, you would call someone in so that they could man that backup vehicle?
Correct.
Okay. Questions to the chief? Thanks, chief.
And I do really want to acknowledge the creative thinking and work that's gone into this fire department. So the police department is proposing to pilot hybrids, the fire department's proposing to reduce their fleet. And if you looked at the Public Works Vehicle CIP, they completely changed the way they're analyzing their vehicles and their replacement cycles and quantified the process, you have a quantitative analysis rather than simply a critical or recommended recommendation. So it's really a different and a better way to look at it. So, and that took a lot of time. So kudos to Bridget and Guy for putting the effort into that. And I think you see it in the work product and it helps you prioritize the projects.
Are we the first community to test hybrid police vehicles in the winter?
Well, the Ford, most of them use the Ford Explorer, which is just coming online now. This will be the year that'll be available to departments outfitted as a police car. The, the reason why we're piloting it is that if you, we want to see its performance, we want to know its reliability. And also if you've owned a hybrid, you know that cold weather can affect the battery performance, it degrades the ability of the battery to charge. And these vehicles, because of the age of the police station, very few of them are stored indoors. Almost everything is outdoors 24 hours a day, whether it's operating or not. It's, if it's 20 below, it's sitting in 20 below temperatures. So it'll, it'll be a good start, it'll give us a chance to evaluate them and, you know, we'll, we'll learn within the first year or two whether or not they're worthwhile continuing to pursue. Hopefully they will be, it will be the wave of the future. In a way, we're kind of volunteering to be a beta tester, but that's, that's okay. That's why we're doing it a small sample size.
But the, but the hybrid model on the Explorer exists today, it's just not outfitted towards police or this is the first year of the hybrid on the Explorer period?
This will be the first for consumer or for fleet vehicles.
Okay. Okay. All right.
So this next slide shows where the SURF is going over the next few years and a couple of points on this. One, you see the top line of non recurring revenues, almost $295,000 in the 29 estimated actual. But if you look at the next year's, 2020 through 2024, we don't know what's coming. And then, and then you look at the bottom line and you see how we go negative to almost 460,000 by 2024 and you see how reliant the SURF is on these non recurring revenues. So once those non recurring revenues dry up, the SURF dries up. So we really need to be cognizant of that as we move forward. And that's why when I say 1.4 million dollars is a lot, that's, that's something we want to look at and try to lighten the load because we can't count on these non recurring to keep this alive moving forward. But you look at 2021 and that total expense of 1.5, the problem with pushing much of the 1.4 makes it even more expensive in 2021. We do have some breathing room in 22 and 23 and 24, and that's what we're going to try to work with over the next few months. But you are going to see a pretty sizable SURF expenditure in the proposed budget for 2020.
Yeah, and I think that's, I mean, just quick comment, credit to the staff for sort of coming up with this idea of what to do with the non recurring revenue, you know, to reinvest it in the capital and the equipment that we need. And we've had this conversation last year in the budget meeting, we'll have it again this year in terms of where our reserves are for other uses for that sort of, you know, bonus revenue, if you will. You can't count on, you know, big projects like 611 Green Bay Road or, you know, lakefront homes or, you know, the, the future memory care center and things like that. Those aren't, you know, you can dial some of those in, but they don't, you just don't know when they're going to happen, so.
But sometimes they don't occur in the, the year that we anticipate they're going to happen either, such as the, the memory care facility.
Right. It may not happen, you know, you know, but still, there's still a lot of work for them to do.
Wouldn't the, wouldn't the Eden's Plaza development benefit in a number of years? At least one or two?
It absolutely will. We're not sure what year we'd be booking permit revenue in or how many years we'd be booking it over depending on how much of the plaza they're, they're redeveloping and how long it'll take for the, the zoning process to get done. It'll, it's, we don't want to be completely pessimistic, I mean, in the sense that we know that it's, there will be non recurring revenue in the future, but we really don't know when or how much.
Yeah, and I think we've been smart about spending the money after we get it, as opposed to spending the money before we get it, and then you lead yourself into really uncomfortable as opposed to spending the money before we get it, and then you lead yourself into really uncomfortable conversations mid-year. And so a lot of the, you know, we've had a number of year-end sort of budget conversations about, hey, there's an extra $300,000, let's pull those police cars up into this year to use that money. And I, I think that's just prudent, prudent budgeting on the staff's part. Is the North Shore permit revenue in '19, the pediatric, Eden's Plaza pediatric, okay?
What's not in here is the artist's memory care facility, and they are in for permit. So that is a very likely non-recurring permit. I think it would probably be at a $150,000 to the SURF, $150,000 to the general fund. So that $294 is gonna grow, we just don't know by how much. And there will be more than $15,000 in 2020, but we don't know. So this is a worst-case scenario.
This is illustrative, okay? This is what we got, okay.
I'm not gonna read this whole slide. I think the most important point is the, the last bullet point that, you know, we're gonna have to have additional discussions in August and September. The municipal services committee is meeting in August to start digging into our road program. And then we'll have a full village board discussion in September. And as we go through our water and sewer rate projections, we're also gonna be talking about an additional, either committee of the whole or discussion at the village board meeting on our water and sewer rates. Because we, we do, we are looking at increases, not just next year, but the subsequent years as well. And there's ways to address that based on the capital program. But we, we think the full board needs to have a detailed discussion on those projects and those rates. And we'd like to do that before we approve this year's budget. So in terms of FY 2020 revenues, there are, there is some good news. Despite all the stagnation, the state did help municipalities in their new budget. So there's changes in the sales tax law that will require online retailers to remit more sales tax to municipalities. The impact of this is unknown. We're, we're hoping to learn more over time, but I think that's gonna be one with experience. But that change doesn't happen until July 1, 2020. So whatever increase is, it'll only be half for next year's budget. So we'll work through that a little bit more this year, but it's, it's gonna be more of an educated guess in terms of the additional sales tax because there are no real projections provided by anybody right now.
And this is, this is use tax, really, right?
It is gonna affect the use tax, but so use tax is gonna come, the local use tax is gonna come down, which is what has grown over time.
So in essence, what we don't know, what you're saying is, we don't know, because you're supposed to report your use tax on your Illinois tax return, and presumably people aren't perfect on that. So we don't know, in essence, how much wasn't being reported, but now will be collected by the online merchants.
Yes, you are correct.
So we get some of this, but we don't.
We're gonna get more.
We're gonna get more, right, okay.
We just don't have a frame of reference at this point.
Right, and it's allocated because it's use tax and not sales tax. It's allocated on a per capita basis as opposed to directly, does that still?
Part of the change in the law is that.
That's, that's one of the things that's gonna change.
It's gonna be allocated based on what's purchased in Wommet for certain retailers that don't have a presence in Illinois. Amazon has a presence in Illinois.
The use tax is gonna come down, our sales tax is actually gonna go up.
Okay, oh, that's a change then, okay.
Yes, so it's shifting which tax, it's, which category it's gonna go in.
That's good, presumably that's good for us because it's, it's likely that our residents spend more money than the average Illinois resident.
For the reason that you were just talking about, because the other one is per capita, and this one is really gonna be who is actually making the purchases.
So that could be, that could actually be significantly more depending on how it all works out, okay.
This is where growth is going to hopefully come from in 2020 and '21, but again, just a half year in 2020. And Melinda talked about our sales tax being down $50,000 for the year. We're gonna try to conduct a deep dive of our sales tax receipts this summer and fall to find out where that is happening. Because as President Blinsky had mentioned, we did reduce the sales tax budget to account for Carson's Jaguar dealership and some other closures that we knew of, and we're still not hitting our numbers. So we'd like to pinpoint why so that we can project our revenues moving forward. And we talked about Eaton's Plaza not until probably 2021. Motor fuel tax, another good news story from the state. We all know they doubled the gas tax effective July 1st. They didn't, of course, give us that full share of the doubling of our MFT. If they did, it would have been an extra $700,000 in annual revenue. The state did capture a lot of that increase, but we do estimate to have an additional $492,000 every year in motor fuel tax. And this is gonna go to the road program.
This is a permanent jump in our road funding as a result of this, which is good.
So how does it work? Because again, remember when we increased the motor fuel tax in Wommet and it impacted the six or seven gas stations, is this all from our gas stations in Wommet?
No, this is, this is the state's contribution. In your local allocation of it, the village's own motor fuel tax is, is simply the flat rate that was set by the board.
So it's per cap, it's not like sales tax, where, okay, so that's a per cap allocation, okay.
This is a big change from the last time we were in front of the board because we were thinking we'd have to look at new revenue sources to help fund and enhance road program. We have an additional revenue source now of almost $500,000. So as Bridget and Dan and their team are plugging in scenarios for road program options to improve the condition of our roads, this is going to go a really long way. So when we have a municipal services meeting late in August and the board meeting in September, we'll be able to see the impact of these additional dollars.
Bridget, you can put this to work, right?
Yeah.
Fastest yes in history.
And then in terms of other fees, you know, we are not looking to increase vehicle stickers, building permits, ambulance fees or refuse fees. Refuse is based on contract. One potential wrinkle in that is that they, we are meeting with advanced disposal next week. There's a fuel surcharge clause in the contract that they have indicated they, they may be utilizing with the new state gas tax increase.
So we're giving back part of the motor fuel.
So that, that happened since this presentation was finalized, but we'll be working through that with them. But the good news on the vehicle stickers, building permits, ambulance fees, those have been held flat for many years now, and we'd like to continue to do that.
What advance they'll be talking to us about is not uncommon. The Solid Waste Agency that we're members of has already had to cross that bridge with Groot in terms of the operation of the transfer station and all the hauling to the landfill. There is a, you know, the state giveth and the state taketh away.
Are there, are there any other, you know, like, salt delivery or, you know, or even the, the fuel that we buy for, I mean, are there other places where we may field this?
There's gonna be an imputed cost to anything that's delivered to us. So it, it may be that we'll have increased costs as the, you know, in our bids for salt deliveries and our bids for other commodity, commodity deliveries.
So this is our 2020 budget projection. It's very preliminary, but each department has submitted their proposed budget. We have not reviewed it, but this gives us a good look of where we could be headed for 2020. And the column I'm gonna focus on is the 2019 to 2020 change. And you may, may remember from last year's budget workshop, we foreshadowed this. We've been very fortunate the last few years to have very nominal increases in general fund expenses, whether it's due to significant turnover in police and fire through the renegotiation of our solid waste contract that took on the leaf collection program and leaf disposal, or other changes we were able to make that reduced our costs. But we knew this was coming. This is not a surprise, but the number is fairly significant. So wages and benefits are growing by almost $753,000, which is a 3.4% increase over the 2019 budget. Couple of large drivers of that, health insurance is going up $120,000. IMRF, which are the pensions for non-police and fire employees, is going up $220,000. And Melinda will talk about that on the next slide. But as we talked about last year, we knew that was gonna happen. So we were partly able to balance this year's budget on a one-time reduction in the IMRF rate that benefited every municipality. And now we're getting back to where we were. Commodities, as Tim was talking about, that's where you see a $31,000 increase for projecting increased fuel costs. So that is why the commodities line is going up. So overall, the budget's increasing or tendively increasing by $735,000, which is a 2.5% increase, which in the big picture is not a whole lot in terms of percentage, but the dollar amount is a lot because if our revenues aren't growing all that much, that $734,000 has to come from somewhere, which is the property tax levy. And as we get to the tax levy slide, you'll see where that gets plugged in.
But before we get there, we're only gonna touch on this briefly because we've talked about it a lot. Number one, Mike has, again, reiterated about the change that's happening with IMRF. And that was caused by the fact that they have changed their assumed rate of return. They went from seven and a half down to seven and a quarter. So that increased the liability, hence increasing costs. So not just to Wommet, that is all IMRF municipalities or participants in the system. The police and fire numbers should look familiar to you. Those are the same ones that we had talked about when we had our discussions about going to the 15-year rolling amortization. And if you can recall, we are going to phase into that over a three-to-four-year timeframe. So this is taking that into consideration. So when we're talking about the property tax, we have the three components that make it up. You have your general operating, so you have some sense as to what we're gonna say about that portion of the levy in just a moment, given what we just said about our core expenses and where we think they're gonna land in 2020. Our pension expenses are being driven by our, the funding levels that we have, but really because we're going to that 15-year rolling amortization. Remember what it's gonna do, it's gonna increase our cost for the next three to four, maybe five years. But after that, because we're gonna be paying down that unfunded liability, that portion of the tax levy is actually going to start to come down. That's why we are going towards that particular plan. And then debt is driven by the existing debt that we have in place. So when we look at our tax levy, this is now what makes up the increase. So we're talking about a 4.9% increase as of this point in time when we're looking at the 2020 budget. 4.03% of it is tied to the operation costs that we just talked about in terms of those core general fund costs. Public safety, that has to do with what we just discussed in terms of the increase because of both, this one's the public safety one, so this is on the police and fire. We're mitigating some of the increase that's gonna happen by using $200,000 of the reserve. So not all of the increase is gonna be borne by the property tax increase. And then the remaining piece is the debt service that we have in place right now.
Couple of things to point out. One of the portion that's cut off on the right side, the 4.9% increase, that's about $90 on the average tax bill in Wommet. So that's, you can't see it on there, but it is in the presentation. 4.9 is one of the higher tax levies we've had in the past decade. The only one being higher was 4.97 back in 2017. And that was when we increased the levy by an additional 1% to fund the road program. So we'd levied an additional $150,000 for that. So this is on the higher end. We believe and hope this is a worst-case scenario that we're showing you now because you see that operations increase of $750,000, that basically covers that entire wage and benefit line item increase. So, you know, as we really dig into revenue projections for 2020, if there's some growth there, that growth will then reduce the amount of the operations levy. But if it continues to stagnate or decline where that additional sales tax doesn't offset the decline, then this is where we'd be looking. So it's still too early in the year to really project those 2020 revenues, but we wanted to make sure that we knew what could be coming if that stagnation and decline continued.
So the point here, though, is the, the 2.5% increase in the operations budget expenditures, because the property tax is in essence filling the gap and is smaller than that dollar figure. There's other taxes that pay for the whole operating expense. The 750, which is only 2.5% of expenditures, is 4% of the property tax levy. So that's, that's the big takeaway here. Even though it, it, you know, 2.5% doesn't sound like a big increase in operations, it translates to a bigger increase when you look at the property tax, just because the $2 are, the property tax dollars are smaller denominator.
Any other questions on the property tax estimate right now?
It's just an estimate, right?
It is, it is our best guess estimate as of right now.
Sure.
So we're gonna move on then to the water fund. And right away, we're just gonna jump to the revenue and expenses. And I think you know, one of the first things I'm gonna remind you about again, and we've talked about this again and again and again, consumption is down. And the fact that consumption is down, what does that mean? That means then our revenues are down. So right now, we're projecting that residential water sales are gonna be down about $250,000 for the year. And wholesale water is gonna be down about $450,000, given where we're currently at through the first part of the year. The other category is up $80,000, that's really interest income that is higher than what we anticipated. When we look at the expenditure side, we're overall looking to be down about $495,000. The largest portion of that happens to be with capital bond fees, and that's just a, a timing issue, I think, that's going on right now.
And that doesn't impact our reserve.
It does not impact our reserve. So really, the rest of what's happening in the water fund, there's little tweaks here and there. There's nothing really major to, to, to point out at this point. Are there any questions?
Now, the, the, and I think, Trustee Dodd may have mentioned this to you, Mr. Berman, that one thing that might be interesting, our, our water fees, while there's a connection fee, it's very heavily variable based on consumption. And, you know, given this continuing reduction in, in usage, you know, that may, and, and our, our costs aren't all variable. There's lots of fixed costs for operating the plant regardless of how much water gets cranked out. That might be an area of, of conversation for finance or for the committee of the whole on, you know, should we think about? And it's in conjunction with all the conversation we're having around the stormwater fee, which is in essence a fixed fee addressing a fixed cost. You know, should maybe there be a, a rethinking of how the water fee is based and maybe make more of it fixed and less of it variable? I don't know if you, I don't know how much leeway there is in that, but that might be a conversation worth having.
We're, we're recommending that in 2020, we fund a water and sewer rate study that would bring in a consultant like a Raftalis or somebody else who does that type of work to look at our rate structure and help us come up with some alternative solutions because we know what we're doing now isn't working in terms of meeting our expectations with declining water consumption. And we can't continue down this path, otherwise we're just gonna have to keep increasing and increasing our rates. So that would be split between the water and sewer funds. And I, you know, I think it would look at, you know, all right, maybe debt service becomes a fixed component of everybody's water charge, especially with some large debt projects out there like the water main intakes. And that'll relieve some of the pressure on relying on consumption and the volatility, volatility associated with that. So we think this is something important to do in 2020. Obviously, we won't have any changes in place for next year, but then we'd be ready to maybe look at that structure for 2021.
$30,000 seems like a lot of money for a bunch of spreadsheet work, but.
This was a call on the phone and asking how much you think it would cost estimate.
Okay, so let's hope we can do this, because this is a bunch of spreadsheet work is what this is.
Well, I mean, the debt service solution sounds very logical. I mean, could we do that regardless? And I guess see how much you'd save for seeing.
Yeah, I might, I might wanna take a stab at this without having to do the study. We can talk about this when we have.
The trick is really coming up what the variable component should be. I mean, because right now, the, as, as you can tell from looking at the cost categories, the overwhelming bulk of the costs around the water plant are fixed. They're not, they're not variable. But when you bring that, if you bring up the fixed cost, what does the variable one need to be to still? That's the one that's, the fixed costs are the ones we can allocate pretty, pretty confidently ourselves. It's, what's the variable component gonna be? But as you pointed out, debt service, wages, I mean, we're paying the operator the same amount of money just in the control panel, whether they're pumping 2 million gallons or 10 million.
Right, which is why we constantly chased customers because the incremental cost of serving those customers are fairly low and it spreads the fixed costs over a larger base.
Right.
Yeah.
What has really complicated things, as we've talked about, is what we see happening down here. So I, I, last time we met, I had a different sort of a chart for you to see, so it was a bar chart. This one here is giving you some of the numbers in terms of what happened over the last several years. And here's where you're gonna see, so we normally budget, we're gonna say about 1.2 CCFs that we expect. But if you look at what's happened in '16, '17, and now look where we're projected to be for 2019. So we've had several years in a row. Again, we know that a portion of this is because of weather and the other portion of it is a change in habits that are going on in terms of what people are doing with the, their showers and their washing machines and the toilets and the changeouts that they're making. So this is why for 2020, we said it's to be determined in terms of what a rate increase is gonna be. But I will talk to you about some projections that we've put together. So we've kinda skipped ahead, but it just, given the conversation that we had right now, I thought I'd jump ahead to this so you could see again what it looks like in terms of where we think the consumption number is coming in right now for this year. And you know it affects then both the water fund and it's going to color what we talk about with the sewer fund as well.
Sorry for jumping to, I forgot the slide was in this presentation.
No, no, that's fine. It's, it's great to get it out at that point in time. So we'll, we're gonna come back here just a little bit again, because what we wanna do is, I don't think there's any more questions about this particular side. We'll talk about the CIP, because really, what's happening in the water fund, the biggest takeaway is consumption is down. And it's having a huge impact on the fund and what the reserves look like going forward. And that's gonna impact on our discussion about rates that we'll need to have in place in the future years. So the other part is on the expense side is going to be the CIP. And I think Mike is gonna run through some of these items.
And Nabeel is here to answer any questions related to the water plant. The, the projects are limited in number, but not in dollar at the water plant. The electrical improvements are the continuation of our $9 million project. So this isn't really an optional item, this is an informational one. We, we're in process, that contract's been approved. It is being funded through an IUPA low-interest loan, but that does mean $550,000 in new debt service that we're going to have to pay every year over the next 20 years. And that, as we talk about the water rate a little bit more, is, is impacting our needs in 2020 and beyond for, for the rate increase. Water main replacement, this is Central Avenue. So as we're reconstructing that road, this is the right and appropriate time to replace that water main. And it's about $2 million. We are gonna have to issue debt for that. We don't have the cash available to fund that. But that design is in process and we've been talking about with that, with the board for a couple of years now. Just one other repair at the water plant, which is rebuilding the high lift pump for $40,000. This is routine maintenance we need to perform, and we wouldn't recommend deferral. Meter replacement, this is an annual program. We had actually accelerated that to about $90,000 a year for the past four years. Is really looking to change out old meters and get back on a more regular replacement cycle. We have accomplished that, and Nabeel's proposed reducing that back down to $50,000, which is good news. And there's a nice chart in your CIP binder that shows the success of that program in moving those older meters out. And that's why we're comfortable lowering that number. Transmission main repairs, these are our big water transmission mains that send water out to Glenview and beyond. Repairs are pretty critical considering the need for that wholesale revenue, so that's an important project in 2020. Valve improvements, we do the.
The Glenview residents also need water.
Yes, they need water, too.
That's important as well, right?
Valve improvements we do every year. This would fund four valves, which was, which is an increase of one over previous years. So this may be something, as we're looking at the water fund reserve, we may have to take this back down to about $66,000 to do three. But we do really need to do this work, so we'd like to try to do the, the four if we can. The meter shop, meter shop van and small dump truck, we don't have the flexibility in the water and sewer funds like we do in SURF to be able to easily fund our vehicles. We don't have that SURF for water and sewer. So we defer these vehicles a lot, and these are well past due, especially the meter shop van. So our vehicle maintenance superintendent feels very strongly that at least that vehicle really needs to be replaced next year and probably the small dump truck as well. So we're gonna be looking at squeezing those in, but what that does is reduces the reserve because there's no set capital line item for that. So those come right out of reserve. Surge suppressors, this would help reduce water main breaks or theoretically would reduce water main breaks by reducing the pressure in the system. This would be a new program proposed for next year. Bridget and Dan feel strongly that it'll, it will be very helpful. And for a $12,000 investment, I, I think we should try it and see what it does in terms of our main brake numbers. Hydrem painting, this probably isn't even really a CIP item. This is a recurring maintenance project that I think in future years, we're just gonna pull into our operating budget and assume that we need to do because we do need to paint those and make sure they're in, in proper condition. Hydraulic modeling, we'll look at our system. This is probably something we'll end up deferring to relieve some pressure on the reserve. But most of the other projects up here are pretty important. And as we talk more about the water rate, this is why we're looking at increases, we have a lot of needs. And there's not a lot of opportunities to defer or reduce those costs. This is a slide that's been in the presentation now probably three, maybe four years, and it's just kind of a reminder of some major expenditures that are upcoming. We already know about the electrical improvements, the water main replacements. We already know about the electrical improvements, the water main replacements, the annual water main replacement program. So, this is something we started... We've been talking about, it's been our CIP for years and deferred because we didn't have the revenue. With North Main Utilities coming onboard in 2020, the aspirational goal was to start doing 1 to 1.3 million dollars of water main repairs a year. That's not even 1% of our system, which is the recommendation from American Public Works Association or Water Association. So, it's not even everything we need. You see in your CIP binder, the number's over 2 million. This is something we're gonna wanna talk about with the board at one of those upcoming budget discussions is whether we can really afford to do this. Because what it's doing is putting pressure on the rate. And there may be some flexibility to defer or reduce the number, but there are consequences to doing that. So, we really haven't had a deep dive policy discussion on the water main replacement program. We've just put it in there as something we feel is important to do. But we want the board to have that detailed policy discussion and understand the impact on the rate so that we can make informed decisions as we move forward. And we talked about 2020. Now, in our projections, we've already pushed that to 2021 and lowered it to a million just to give us a little bit of breathing room and to see how much money we're actually bringing in from North Main when they come onboard. We wanna make sure we have an expectation of what that revenue will be before we spend it, which is what we've talked about doing the general fund. And the water main intake, it's actually been pushed from 2022 to 2025, which gives us some needed breathing room on our debt service. But that's a $15 million project that has obviously a significant debt service price tag. The good news about pushing that to 2025 is that's when all of our other debt service rolls off. So, everything was scheduled to roll off when our old Glenview contract expired. Basically, what we're doing is replacing that with the debt service from the electrical improvements, the main replacements, the water main intake. So, there's no relief in the rate. We're just substituting basically what last year's debt service amount was. It's reducing every year now until 2025. And we're going back up to, I think, Melinda, about 2.3 million dollars in debt service. So, there's no relief there on the rate, but we're able to accomplish important projects.
So, we've paid off old bonds, but new bonds are coming in instead. And those dollars, again, those are bonding dollars. So, the debt service, the annual cost isn't... We're not gonna put 14.7 million out, we're gonna borrow it and then pay it back.
But one of the good things is that, and I'm sorry, Tim, is that the electrical improvements, that almost 9 million, remember, that's an IUPA loan, low-interest loan. So, that's like a 2% loan that we received to do that work.
Rates are going down and there aren't a lot of Muni issuances, so we should be... You know, we've got borrowing to do and rates should be cooperating with us.
Just two supplemental points on the water main replacement. That started... That kind of crept into the CIP in about 2015 or so, 2016, as we signed the North Main contract. And it was more aspirational. I think we anticipated somewhere north of a million dollars per year new net revenue starting in... It won't be all in 2020. Their deadline to connect to Glenview, us through Glenview, is July 1st of 2020. Again, that was in 2014 when we signed that contract. So, consumption may have changed since then. So, it's prudent for us to see what our actual revenue is going to prove out to be when they come online. But part of that $500,000 debt service for the electrical improvements is to have the water plant ready to go when we almost doubled the number of wholesale customers that we're going to have next year. That's still all very good news for the village. Water main intake, just to clarify, it's not... Doesn't relate to a water main. It's the main intake of raw water from Lake Michigan that goes out about a mile into the lake. That's why it's a $15 million issue. That will eventually be built into our wholesale cost numbers that we charge to the communities that we serve, unlike local water mains that are part of our local distribution system. Those big-ticket items such as the electrical improvements and the lake intakes all become part of the capital base that is built into our wholesale rates and on which the village gets a 7.5% rate of return on investment. So, it's not all terrible news.
Said another way, our wholesale customers' rate goes up to foot a bunch of the bill for this stuff.
That's gonna take some time to increase because of the new usage. So, the formula, this isn't gonna happen, you know, we're not gonna see that new revenue coming the year after this project's completed.
Are any of the main replacements in the same area that we're doing storm sewer work? Would we save any money by doing them at the same time?
Locust is already in process because we're reconstructing the road right now. Lake Avenue, I don't... There's no storm sewer work there as part of the neighborhood storage improvements. This is just east of Skokie Boulevard and then central is part of the large reconstruction.
But is the lake part of... Isn't there something in the county... Isn't Lake and Skokie on sort of our shortlist with the county and IDOT in terms of future projects?
Water main would be 100% village-funded.
Right.
So, this is outside of that intersection improvement. That's more simply pedestrian improvement.
Okay, okay. We're not tearing up the road for that.
Not a complete reconstruction.
Okay.
Bridgette?
Not in that area, okay.
So, this sort of brings us then to the discussion of the water fund policy. And I won't spend a lot of time here. But one of the things to look at is what's happening with our reserve and where we're getting closer to that recommended minimum. And as I do projections looking out, this is gonna be a large concern for us because if we're assuming that consumption has continued to be reduced over the next several years, it is going to put pressure on the rate. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the scenarios that we put together. But the rest of this up here is something that we've talked about before. But it's just to give you some context of things that we look at when we're putting the reserve together and things that prior boards have said were policy decisions that were driving the water fund reserve. One of the big pieces to it is to always think about, we try to do at least a million-dollar transfer from the water fund to the general fund to reflect the revenue that we're obtaining because of the sales to the wholesale customers. This slide, I think, we've already touched on. So, it gives you a sense as to what is happening with consumption and why we have concerns about what the rate might look like in 2020 and beyond. But I'll talk to you about that a little bit more in a later slide. This slide, I think, we can go past because we've already discussed this. So, not gonna spend a ton of time on this particular side because the big takeaway that you're gonna have, revenues are down. Why are they down? Because consumption is down.
Right, because our sewer revenues today are all based on water consumption numbers.
That is correct. Talk about the CIP items.
CIP sewers, you know, historically, we have tried to fund all the recommended and critical sewer projects for the next fiscal year just given the condition and age of our infrastructure. And that is what we would seek to do again in 2020. But that would require a rate increase. And that's part of what we'll talk about at a future meeting. But in terms of critical priorities for next year, sewer lining, this is a regular recurring program that's funded with an IUPA low-interest loan. We'll be looking at increasing the funding starting in 2021 to do some additional work at the lateral connections with the main. And that's described in more detail in your CIP binder. But it's... I think it's an important project to do to help tighten up the system. Neighborhood storage is a big number, but we're moving forward. About $25 million, we expect to issue in debt next year. Some of this expense is going to happen this year. We're about ready to go out to bid on Phase 1A, which are the storm sewers in the public right of way and go out later to bid this year for the reservoir community playfields with construction starting in the summer. So, this will be happening in 2020. And we'll have the future meeting in September to talk about the revenue on a stormwater utility to pay that debt service. Sewer repairs and sewer maintenance, both around $330,000. These are regular recurring maintenance and repair items that we need to continue to do moving forward. Stormwater pumping station electrical improvements, we highlighted this last year as a major project upcoming. This is year one of two. So, Nabeel and his team are in the conceptual design phase right now, which was about a $20,000 budget. So, this will be $400,000 in 2020 and 800,000 in 2021. Very important project that we would not recommend deferring. This would be financed with bond proceeds as well. Would not be paid back through the stormwater utility, would have to be paid back through the sewer fee. Stormwater pumping station pump renovations, this is just regular maintenance of $35,000. There's another pump that needs maintenance in 2021. So, we would not recommend deferring it because you're pushing back both pumps then and those are important to have in working condition. Small dump truck, we talked about on the water side, there is not that SURF. So, these vehicles get deferred a lot, but it's getting to the point that this would need to be replaced. It's cost shared with the water fund. Smoke testing is a continuation of the program we've been doing for several years now. And then rain ready, that's that grant cost share program with private homeowners to install rain gardens or other such projects on their property. These projects, especially smoke testing and rain ready, are directly drawing down on our reserve. And that's impacting the need for a rate increase. So, when we talk about a future meeting on our water and sewer rate, we're gonna take a deeper dive into these programs to really discuss the policy implications, the value, and whether we wanna continue to do them. And then the impact that would have on the rate. So, you know, it's gonna be more of a workshop where we can plug in numbers into a spreadsheet and you can see what it means for the reserve and see what rate increases would be required to continue these programs. And that's why we wanna have this discussion before the 2020 budget's approved because these continue to draw down that reserve, which will eventually create a funding problem in both funds.
So, in the interest of time, what was supposed to come out of this slide is the 2020 projection and what we think may happen. There's a slide later on. So, what Mike was talking about in terms of this workshop that we'd like to have is I've already put models together. And those models are taken into consideration what is happening with revenue, what we think is gonna happen with consumption going forward if we take sort of a worst-case scenario. And I guess you can argue whether or not it's worst-case, but we've made some assumption about reducing that. Looking at the potential increase that we have on the operating side, handling all of the capital items that we've talked about today in the CIP, and then seeing what that would do to the rates. So, we have a slide later on that we will give you some sort of sense as to what things look like. That's why we're leaving this as to be determined.
This is just an informational slide because we're talking about what our sewer and water rates are gonna be next year. We know there's gonna be an increase to pay for the neighborhood storage improvements. And it appears to be the direction we're heading as a new stormwater utility fee. And the board did approve a implementation contract with Raftellus this evening on the consent agenda. So, we're moving in that direction. There'll still be some important decisions that need to be made. And we can always stop this and put it on the sewer rate. But one way or another, we do need that additional revenue. And you see the last bullet point, for next year in 2020, Tier 2, which is kind of that average middle property on the stormwater utility, will be a $230 increase on the utility bill, increasing to $430 in totality by 2022.
So, the takeaway from this slide, the reserve is going down and it's getting closer and closer to that recommended level. So, we know that we have some concerns. And especially, again, if we look at consumption going out, we will fall below the reserve line fairly soon. So, I'm gonna jump in the interest of time to...
Melinda, one quick question.
Sure.
So, our water debt service runs off in 2025. We don't have the same type of runoff... We don't have some big maturity wall for the sewer side, though, do we?
We do, but it's later out and we've already started layering debt into that. So, that's when you...
So, there isn't a benefit that can help really offset us here? We're already using it or...
Yep, so that's how we sort of layered in the issuances that we did for the last program. And as we modeled out the future, that's what we were trying to do, is to sort of fill in those gaps as we go forward.
Right, right.
And taking those kind of things into consideration. So, this is an item that was not part of your packet because it took a little while to sort of put this together as we've kind of gone back and forth in pulling the 2020 numbers together and kind of thinking about going forward. So, this is not in your packet. But we have this discussion on a regular basis to sort of think about, what is all of the things that we're talking about? What could it mean for an average resident in terms of what they would be paying on an annual basis? So, how about we first step back and think of the 2019 budget? When we put that together, the sewer rate, when we've talked about the median cost, and we've had this discussion as part of the stormwater utility fee, that's about $355. So, you can walk the rates down. We put in what the average property tax bill would be for a 2019 property. So, you come up with about, let's say, $2,900 was what we thought was going to be the cost for median average person in the village of Womet. Given what's happening with consumption, if consumption is going down, that means your utility costs by definition are coming down. So, that's why you see there's a differential there between the budget and what is happening with the estimate. When we've talked about now these things that are happening with the CIP in terms of those additional needs that we have, and we put in some modest adjustments for increases in commodities and personnel services and such, this is what rates would look like over time. So, with the water and the sewer fund, again, this is just a model that I have right now, given where we're at, is that I'm thinking that the sewer fee in and of itself, outside of all the impact from the stormwater fee, that we would need a 5% increase in 2020 and a 10% increase in 2021. For the water, so that was on the sewer rate, again, just by itself. For the water rate, it would be a 3% increase in 2020, a 4% increase in 2021, and a 5% increase in 2022. It's to give you some context to think about what things might look like going forward, where we're at right now.
That's a very good slide. I mean, not good news, but very good slide. Well, a big chunk of that is the stormwater fee, which we knew was a new, you know, it's a significant expenditure and it's a new item for everyone, so.
And we'll send this out to the board since it wasn't included in your packet, so you can reference that in the future.
And I can tell you...
You said that's the average, but how did you just sort of pick those numbers at average based on?
So, I took... We used the median that we had talked about before as part of the modeling for the stormwater when we started that. So, that's... So, what I did is, we assumed that the median usage is 84 units in an... On an annual basis. It's come down to about 79 for where we're at with the estimated actual. And then I brought it down going forward. So, I said the median usage is going to be 80 CCFs on an annual basis. And that's roughly a 5% decrease. So, that's what I'm assuming consumption is gonna be going forward. And based on that, that's... And then adding in all the capital and doing really moderate increases on the different expenditure categories, this is where we're sort of left with. And then the property tax takes into consideration, you know, how we modeled that out and it has the pension discussion that we've put in place, how we want to fund a portion of the road program in there, the debt service components. So, that's what the property tax increase looks on an annual basis right now on an average tax bill.
Right, now, this is the context we need to think about these things.
So, after that sobering slide, we'll talk about the budget schedule.
So, this is kind of the first really important step in preparing the 2020 budget. Municipal Services is gonna meet August 27th to review the road program. And the way we envision this meeting going is that the engineering team will present a plethora of different options in terms of improving the condition of our roads. And we're looking for the committee to kind of reduce those options to a more manageable number for the committee of the whole to review and also to ask questions so that when we have that committee of the whole review in September, we can have answers and have a really informed discussion with the full board. So, that's where we're going on August 27th. September 23rd, this is an aggressive meeting to handle two really large topics at one time. But we don't have a lot of meeting opportunities and that's why we're trying to squeeze them in. So, we'd be having Raftellus come to present on the stormwater utility implementation. This is where we're gonna look to make some major policy decisions in terms of confirming the tiered structure, which seemed to be the consensus of the board, which was the most efficient way to implement the fee. We also needed to look at what we're doing with tax cap entities, incentives, programs, and credits. And the other one being how we're gonna build multifamily residences. We don't have to make all final decisions at that meeting, but we need to adopt that ordinance by the end of the year. So, we have to move in a direction where we feel comfortable with limiting those options to maybe one or two. And then we would do our full engineering program, CIP. So, you notice in the binders that were delivered to you, the engineering program was not included. The engineering team is doing a lot of work in updating that. They're surveying every roadway in town to give us a really current condition index, which is something we don't historically do. But given the condition after this winter, we felt it appropriate. So, that's taking some time to develop. And we'll really dive into that in more detail. Fortunately, that MFT dollar from the state will really help and hopefully make this discussion a little bit easier for 2020 and maybe look at something maybe more robust in 2021 because we'll also have some of that excess reserve available in 2020. The proposed budget will be presented to the board on October 8th. In October, we'll do budget workshops. Last few years, we've only had one workshop. We may need more than one this year. So, as we get closer, we may be seeking a couple of dates from the board to have those on the calendar. And then we need to have the budget adopted on November 26th. That would be the same date we would look to adopt our stormwater utility ordinance as well as our water and sewer rate ordinances for 2020.
And as Mike is talking about all these dates, I can't help but keep looking at Barb and the big smile on her face to think...
She'll be here. She's gonna come back and see that.
She's coming back. This was so much fun. She's gonna get back her gifts.
And the one meeting not up here is what we had talked about tonight of digging... And the one meeting not up here is what we had talked about tonight of digging into our water and sewer rates and some of those CIP projects. So we'll have to see about scheduling another committee of the whole. Or if we can't do that, maybe tagging it before or onto a board meeting.
Yeah, I'm worried about the 23rd.
It's, it's a lot. And I think once engineering completes their analysis of the roads and our options, we'll have a better feel for what that discussion is going to entail when we factor in the new MFT dollars and the excess. The discussion may not be as, as difficult as we thought. And we'll see how it goes at municipal services. So we can always split these up as well. There's a board meeting on September 24th. So we can always continue some of that discussion into that meeting as well.
And the board picture, I think, earlier. So we can all look tired for that.
Yes.
This go around.
That's all we have.
Questions for the staff?
Yeah, I'm sure you have tons, but you know, at least relative to tonight's presentation. This is helpful because this basically was sort of a mini committee of the whole meeting with, with the presentation being more than just sort of a mid-year update with the CIP. So that saves, it takes some pressure off certainly the September 23rd meeting or another meeting. But questions for the staff?
I want to thank Melinda. She's really under the weather and for her to get through this presentation was quite remarkable. I hope you have a voice tomorrow.
Plus all the department heads hung around, just in case we had a question.
It's pretty sobering.
Yeah, it's going to be a tough budget this year. This is the toughest one I've, I think I will have experienced since I've been on the board. So. Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Melinda. Trustee Kennedy, I think that was all that was on your report.
Yes, everything else is on the consent agenda.
So the administration committee had three items that were on consent. Municipal Services, trustee Sullivan.
All items were approved on consent.
Public Safety, trustee Kersman.
No report.
Judiciary Committee, trustee Plunkett.
No report.
There's no reports from our, are special committees on here? Yes. There's no reports from our special committees. Item seven is new, new business. There's no additional new businesses discussed. Item eight is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right. Well, Barb, since this is your, your last meeting, I'm going to ask you to do your one final roll call vote on our, on our.
Motion to adjourn.
We can all say no. We can never leave.
As a committee, so Madam Clerk, please call a roll of the motion.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
President Blinsky.
Aye. So the motion passes. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.